Okay, and we're.
Recording in progress.
It's an operation, you're good.
Okay.
Okay, all right, thank you. Will the meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission for Wednesday, May 4th, 2022, please come to order? This evening's meeting will be a hybrid planning and zoning meeting hosted in person at the Nathaniel B. Green Community Center, 32 Church Street, Guilford, Connecticut, Menon Contuck Room, second floor, as well as virtually by Zoom. During this meeting, our procedures will be as follows. One, when you first enter the Zoom meeting, you will be in a virtual waiting room until the meeting host admits you. Two, please be aware that your camera, if you have one, and your microphone will be muted by the meeting host when you enter the meeting. You can turn your camera on at any time so that you can be seen by others when/if you choose to. In order to run an efficient and orderly meeting in this virtual environment, please, unless stated otherwise with the meeting chairman during the meeting, the meeting host will keep everyone other than the commission members muted. You will still be able to hear everything said by the commission members even if you're muted and/or your camera is not on. There will be opportunity for public comment during public hearings, at which time public participants will be unmuted. Three, the security secretary will read the call of the meeting as published according to Governor Lamont's executive order. Four, during the public hearing, the applicant will be invited to present the application. Explain to the commission and others president what is being requested. The meeting host will share all related documents on the screen as needed. In addition, all applications and supporting materials for each application on the agenda are available in the public meeting calendar page of the town website, www.cia.gilford.ct.us, and also through a direct link on the planning and zoning page. Five, comments of town agencies will be read for each application if there are any. There will be clarifying questions from commissioners. Six, there will then be an opportunity for clarifying questions from the audience. Please raise your hand to the Zoom platform and may be called on and unmuted. This public hearing must be recorded. As this public hearing must be recorded, it is necessary for speakers to identify themselves each time they speak by stating their name and address. Seven, after all clarifying questions are exhausted, those who wish to support the application may come forward, state their name and address for the record, and make a statement. Then those who oppose the application will come forward for a statement. Eight, the applicant will then have an opportunity to ask any questions or concerns raised about the public or commissioners. Nine, once the public hearing is closed, the applicant is free to leave or remain for the balance of the public hearings and the regular meeting during which the commission will try to reach a decision on each application. Each applicant will be notified in writing as the decision of this commission and has the right to appeal to the Superior Court if desired. Ten, decisions of this meeting are available the day after the meeting by calling the Planning and Zoning Department at (203) 453-8039, or by emailing planning.zoning@cia.gilford.ct.us after 9:00 a.m. Eleven, all actions taken tonight by the commission will be by a roll call. All commissioners and staff will identify themselves from record before speaking. See you this evening on the following members, who will please identify themselves. Commissioners Kevin Clark.
Here.
Bill Freeman.
Yes.
Phil Johnson.
Welcome.
Sean Cosgrove.
Here.
And I am Scott Edmunds. We don't have ultimates tonight. Either staff presence, or Jamie Stein, town planner.
Good evening.
I don't believe Steve is here. Lisa Kean, Bino, Planning and Zoning Administrative Assistant. And Peter Schultz, VDR. This meeting will be recorded via the Zoom platform and made available on the town website for viewing. The secretary will now read the legal notice. And Sean, just so you're aware, we've been told to try to speak as loudly as we can so the folks in the room can hear us often.
Okay. And Scott, you and the secretary before, do you read the actual full HTMS?
The whole Zoom, no. I just say that the Zoom information is below, then I skip it.
Okay, right. Here's the notice. Notice issued by the Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission for a public hearing made for 2022. This meeting will be held in person at the Nathaniel B. Green Community Center, 32 Church Street, Guilford, Connecticut. Not a good talk. On second floor and will be available virtually. The following application will be heard. David Lissio, 134 Prawley Road, map eight, lot 34. Zone R2, coastal site plan to add a second floor and patio off the master bedroom. Town Government Public Works, 50th driveway, map 34, lot 17-1. Zone I-1, coastal site plan, construction of 23 foot by 17 foot by 60 feet, roof building. Copies of these applications are available for inspection in the Planning and Zoning Office. Now the town will say, www.cia.gilford.ct.us. At this hearing, persons who may attend may either in person or via web connection shall be heard. All written correspondence shall be submitted to planning.zoning@cia.gilford.ct.us 24 hours prior to the meeting day. Documents are available at Planning and Zoning Office, (203) 453-8039 for assistance. Date of Guilford, Connecticut, this 12th day of April, 2022. Our past chairman, Phil Johnson. Not embarrassed, but, you see.
Thank you, Mrs. Secretary. I entertain a motion of the public hearing.
The move?
Thanks. Sean, all favors and?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. So, first item on the agenda is Hubbard Road LLC, Hubbard Road, map 79, lot 48, zone I-2, resubdivision two lots. This is the second public hearing for this item. Attorney Bloom.
Thank you, good evening. Attorney Amy Bloom, Burshene, Volte, and McKeon, 900 Chapel Street, 11th floor, New Haven, Connecticut, 06510. Happy to report that we did obtain our approvals from the Inland Wetlands Commission. So, we are here before the commission tonight to continue with the hearing that we had started in April. We are here to answer any questions or provide any additional material that the commission has. We have presented our entire plans and the architect, the engineer, at the last public hearing. So if there are any questions or any additional information that the commission would like, please let us know what that is.
Thanks. I believe we have a memo from Kevin McGee, environmental planner. We should probably read that in the record to start with this, if you don't have anything else to present immediately.
That would be fine.
Great. Phil, do you want to tackle this?
Here.
Someone's gonna have to take over the fifth inning on this one. I'll please start.
I'm sorry, Phil, this is Jamie, just to...
May 3rd, 2022, Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission, from Kevin McGee, environmental planner. Our resubdivision and site plan from Hubbard Road LLC, Hubbard Road, Guilford, Connecticut, 06437, assessors map 79, lot 48. The applicant is proposing to resubdivide an industrial zone, four acre lot, to create two lots for a CGS 8-30 geothermal housing project, which includes two 50-unit apartment buildings, parking area, septic systems, utilities, and stormwater managing area. Stormwater management consists of roof leaders discharged, discharging to dry wells, and parking lot runoff in catch bases, which in portions of the site flow through perforated level pipes into a stormwater filtration system located approximately 25 feet from the wetlands. Inland wetlands and West River are located to the east side of the property, and a pond is located south of the property as part of the subdivision requirements. The applicant proposes to dedicate a 1,007, or 17,424 square foot strip of land along the east, along the West River, to the town Guilford or its affiliate. This dedicated open space provides approximately 55-foot protective buffer along the West River, which is noted by the inland wetlands regulations as a major water course. The wetlands assessment and impact analysis prepared by REMA on January 4th, 2022 noted that the water quality testing in the West River indicated very good water quality. The stream habitat assessment noted habitat conditions are good to excellent for nine U.S. EPA habitat parameters, and the bio-assessment metrics results show excellent water quality. At the Guilford Inland Wetlands Commission's meeting held on October 13, 2021, and February 9, 2022, the commission voted to take jurisdiction of the whole site as a regulated activity, and made the applicant a significant activity with a complex application fee due to stormwater and sanitary systems combined 15,000 gallon per day likely impacts to the West River wetlands and riparian zones. With the complex application fee, the inland wetlands commission contracted Robert Wayway, PE of God Disposy and Associates, PC, and Matthew J. Pop, professional wetland scientist, Environmental Land Solutions LLC, to conduct a third-party review of the application. The consulting services performed consisted of information review, next on the page, sorry, hold me down, and site visits to evaluate the site hydrology of an emphasis on no net increase of stormwater, stormwater management practices associated with site development, sanitary system assignment impacts and erosion and sedimentation control practices. The town's third-party review consultants worked with the applicant's engineers and wetland specialists to bring the submitted plans in compliance with the 2002 Connecticut Guidelines for Soil Erosion and Sediment Control and the Connecticut Department of Environment Protection 2004 Connecticut Stormwater Quality Manual, the Guilford Inland Wetlands Regulations and the subdivision code. The third-party review was evaluated and also evaluated the direction of groundwater flow to flow of the sanitary system for vinyl impacts of nitrous and phosphorus on the West River and the pond adjacent to the property to the south. The Guilford Inland Wetlands Commission's on May 2nd, 2022, special meeting voted to approve a regulated activity and subdivision referral for the construction of the portable housing project, including two buildings, parking area, septic system facilities, and stormwater management area with conditions. As part of the subdivision referral, the commission noted its support for the open space conservation area along the West River to be deeded to the town Guilford or affiliate. Please review the inland wetlands commission referral letter dated May 4th.
Here.
The move?
So, all in favor?
We'll go.
We'll go.
Well done, Scott.
I'll say it.
Thank you all.
Thank you over there. I'm done too.
You got one under the belt?
Thank you, Peter.
Thank you, Jamie.
Good night.
Thank you, everybody. Thanks, everyone.
2022, for your, their, other recommendation, recommending conditions of subdivision approval. Recommended recommendations for conditions of approval. One, open space dedication be increased along Hubbard Road to approximately 20 feet beyond the end of the retaining wall for the bridge. This strip along Hubbard Road should be minimum of 10 feet wide to allow safe public access to the dedicated open space. Two, to assume further compliance of stormwater, to assure, I'm sorry, further compliance of stormwater management systems in protecting the adjacent wetlands and West River from contaminated stormwater and compliance of Town Guilford, Connecticut Department of Environment Protection MS-4 reporting. A, a written maintenance and operational manual for all water quality control basins located on the private property. The manual should provide provisions for yearly inspections of maintenance, stormwater systems, and yearly reports to the town engineer. The maintenance schedule should include, but not be limited to, weekly, monthly, or quarterly inspections of catch basins, removal of accumulated material, non-native species of the swales, and energy dissipators. The plan should include a note that the use of de-icing materials should be limited to sand and environmentally friendly chemical products. Use of sand environmentally friendly products should be kept to a minimum. Environmentally friendly products shall consist of calcium, magnesium, and acetate, calcium chloride, or magnesium chloride. The property owner shall coordinate use of newer and safer products or de-icing when the Guilford Inland Wetlands Commission, should these products in the future become available or used. The maintenance plan needs to be provided, needs to provide a statement that the stormwater management plan will be reviewed annually so that the inspection, maintenance requirements may be modified, and if any changes to the plan would require the approval of the town engineer and the wetlands enforcement officer. B, and as built drawing of the completed stormwater system be prepared by a licensed engineer. C, the applicant shall file a declaration regarding stormwater management on the land records.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman.
Is that okay? I think that's it.
Yeah. Attorney Bloom, do you have any, take any issue with any of his recommendations from Kevin McGee?
No, we do not.
Okay, so, Jamie, have we discussed whether that circle of land he's talking about is to be part of the actual dedication or to be an easement?
Attorney Bloom did provide sort of a diagram of the potential land dedication and that easement, so if Attorney Bloom, you and your team would like to address that?
Sure. That, I have John Waggonblatt here tonight. John had prepared this map which indicates that property, excuse me, to be dedicated, deeded to the town or the town's designee. So, it is our intention that the entire strip in that green, if we pull that up on the screen, John can speak about that and give you the dimensions, I believe.
Sure. John, are you, are you prepared to bring that up, or would you like me to do that?
Ah, yes, I have it all set to go.
Great, you're free to share your screen.
Okay, thank you. For the record, my name is John Waggonblatt, principal of the LRC group, 160 West Street, Corona, Connecticut. Here. All right, this is, I hope you are seeing a plan on the screen.
Yeah, thank you.
We are.
Thank you. Originally, we had a line that came from basically, this is the corner of the existing wing wall for the bridge that supports the road crossing over the West River. And we went basically from this corner and went straight down, and the request from both engineering and from Guilford Inland Wetlands was to provide a access. And based, and based on the conditions of approval by inland wetlands, this is the outline that they're talking about. I believe that was 25 feet coming up from the end of the wing wall and coming out 10 feet and tying in, and running along casually the flagged wetlands and then cutting through the wetlands, and it would be a strip probably about 55 to 60 feet wi, of, wide, 55 to 60 feet wide from a similar length of the river that would be, and with this little 10-foot wide strip to tie the, for access from Hubbard Road. And that's what we are proposing. And then it does equal the 17,000, I think it's 434 feet, whatever, I believe, for the 10%.
Okay. Great, any questions from commissioners related to this item?
If, if, the town has taken this, do you know that, that, or is it going to the phase or the?
Jamie, if you could, you could speak in, I'm, I know that there was interest in this.
Sure, yep. Thank you, Scott. After our first public hearing upon Commissioner, at that point Commissioner Edmunds' request, Edmund request, I had reached out to the environmental planner, Kevin McGee, as well as to the town engineer, and asked if they were in favor, as well as our first electman, asked if they were in favor of this land dedication and this portion along the West River being deeded to the town. They were in favor, they thought this was a good proposal, and it was at that point that Janice made this initial kind of recommendation, which has now been altered just a little bit, but allowing people to get, you know, without trespassing from the deeded land along the West River up to the street and around the wing wall of the West River Bridge.
Thank you. Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. John. So, in, in, funds, recommendations for conditions of approval, item two, and this has come before and before, and it's been a little bit kludgy, but, you know, a written maintenance and operational manual for all water quality control basins located on the private properties, the manual should provide provision for a yearly inspection. We have dealt with this not too well before. Who has conducted the, who has conducted the inspections? And who is in charge of maintenance?
Thanks, Sean, that's a good question. I should send it away, me too, an additional question that we'll have for Attorney Bloom. But first, John Waggonblatt, thank you for sharing your screen, if you wouldn't mind unsharing so we see all of ourselves. Attorney Bloom, one question which dovetails with Sean is, we haven't heard yet from your team about your management plan for this property in terms of management of the buildings as well as management of the property itself, and also could you then answer Sean's question as well?
Well, at this point, you know, it would be the owner of the property, excuse me, that would be managing the property. In terms of, if there's a management company that's hired at some future time, I, you know, I don't know who that management company is. There's a, there is, for the affordable plan, which has nothing to do with the stormwater, that's just dealing with, excuse me, managing the affordable units and making sure they're affordable, which is, it goes to people that qualify. That's something that we're dealing with, the Guilford Housing Authority, and have a meeting set up the end of the month with Terry Revisa. We're just coordinating dates and times for that. But in terms of the stormwater maintenance, usually in other municipalities where I've dealt with the stormwater maintenance, it's just an agreement that's between the owner of the property and it's, the town signs off on it, and I think that's what they're talking about in 2C about this declaration to be filed on the land records, which just will detail the storm management, which comes from the plans that are already on file as to what would be done to manage the basin and the flow of the stormwater.
Yeah, I don't, I don't find that acceptable. You know, if you're, if you're passing this off to the management company...
No, I'm not.
But this is, this is a condition of approval.
I didn't say I was passing anything off to the management company, so maybe I misspoke, or maybe I was misunderstood. I said the owner of the property that will be, it's, all the issues of taking care of the stormwater is set forth on the plans, and then that just gets detailed into a separate document that then would get recorded on the land records.
Has the owner who's going to be managing this property, as you say, have they, do they have other examples of properties that they've managed to this point?
We're not talking about managing a property. We're talking about the owner of the property ensuring the management of their stormwater detention basins that are located on their property, and it's the, with the engineer that inspects and makes sure that the things are working properly.
Understood, but additionally, I was asking about the management of the building and management of the facilities.
Again, there's no building built at this point in time, so there's not a management company. You're talking about whoever is the owner of the property is responsible for the conditions of making sure that the stormwater basin is operating properly.
Sure. Again, yes, the stormwater was one question. So, the, it sounds like your answer is that the owner is planning on taking management of the buildings themselves once they get built, correct? Or still choose to hire a management company? Sean, do you have any follow-up?
Well, it just, it just, it's too big. You know, this is a recommendation of our environmental planner, Kevin McGee, and he's saying recommendations for conditions of approval, and a written maintenance and operational manual for all water quality control basins located on private properties. I'm all in favor of this property, I really am. I, I want to see more of the housing in Guilford, but then you're leaving, this is too open-ended for Attorney Bloom just to say, well, it's to be determined.
So, let me, let me throw something out. I think most of the time when we've had problems in the past, it's been on space that's been dedicated to a land trust or, you know, not specifically to the town. I don't think the stormwater basins for this project, they're still retained on private property by the applicant. So it's not like this is, you know, the ones we've had where we had like, you know, five lot subdivisions, and there's a dedicated open space for the stormwater, and then there's no description of, you know, we say, okay, it has to be inspected, but there's been no, no accountable party.
No, no follow-up by?
Right. So, I think in this case, it's a little different from the standpoint that the owner of the property specifically has the management responsibility because it's on their property. Does that make sense?
Yeah, but, but, but if the, I take your point, Phil, but if the property owner is not doing any regular maintenance or inspection, then what happens?
I think the town engineer at that point says, you're not doing it, then they're in a position to go to the zoning enforcement officer for notice of violation. Am I wrong on that, Jamie?
I believe that the condition states that the enforcement would come to the wetlands enforcement officer.
Okay, all right.
No, but just, yep, just a point of clarification.
Let's say, based on the year.
It actually says with the town engineer and wetlands enforcement officer, but, you know, and that's, that's who would have oversight, so if somebody was to complain that there's something not working correctly, then the town would come out exactly, and the zoning officer would then, you know, make a, make a report.
So, Attorney Bloom, so just, so you have some history on this. We've had issues in the past where there's been significant overgrowth or garbage or whatever it is that ends up in these detention basins that nobody wants to take care of. So, I think everyone's looking forward to having this be a successful project, we just want to make sure that there's someone that's going to be accountable, and my, my sense is it's the property owner, and...
Yes, absolutely. A, a property owner's not going to want all, you know, waste and everything committed on their property, and yes, they take this serious and they're going to make sure that it's clean. I mean, right now, you know, people just continually go... go in there and, and have been dumped, you know, they dump things in the woods there. So, uh, you know, the owner will be, you know, clearing and, and taking care of and making sure that nothing is going wrong with that stormwater basin because that's important to the, the project, uh, working correctly as well.
Thank you.
Thanks. Uh, I, I have a question. Bill Freeman, another question.
Yeah, uh, Jamie, uh, isn't it, it's stated there that it's going to be an annual inspection or a review by the town, uh, town engineer and the inland wetlands? I mean, is there something that's going to be out of schedule?
I, I think that the annual inspection will be reported to, um, the town engineer and the wetlands enforcement officer and would require their approval. So.
Yeah, so I, I think in the documents that you're going to create, you're going to specify that there's an annual inspection, is that correct?
Right. I think that that is, yes, that would be the condition of approval. Um, and I also, um, do want to draw the commission's attention to, uh, it's something that was referenced in, uh, Kevin McGee, the environmental planner's memo, uh, but it's a document that we don't typically see on the commission. And it is the, uh, letter that was drafted by, uh, the Inland Wetlands Commission giving the, um, favorable referral of the subdivision uh, to, um, uh, to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Uh, and the reason that I raised this particular memo, um, I'm not certain if it was given to you, but there are, um, and perhaps Commissioner Clark can speak to it, there are, um, you know, uh, similar conditions, but there's a third one that talks about, um, a certain, um, you know, additional application with the sanitary systems. And I just wanted to raise that for the commission because it does, in the, in the condition, it does call out, uh, that required maintenance and inspections of the system would be reported to the Planning and Zoning Commission. So, uh, if you just give me a moment, I will pull up that document for everyone. Uh, with your permission, Attorney Bloom, I do, I do believe this is the document that's referenced in the memo, um, uh, that was provided to the commission. So I just want to be clear that we have all of that material.
Is that the May 4th letter?
Yes.
From, from the commission to, uh, Connecticut Affordable Housing Initiative?
Yes.
And that would be what they have on there is condition three?
Uh, yes. So it's a, it's a, it's a two-page document and condition three. Okay.
Yes, I, I've seen that. Thank you.
Okay, great. Just bear with me a second here, y'all, while I try to pull that up.
Sure.
Yep. Are you all going with me to my OneDrive file here?
Right now, we're looking at the draft agenda.
Okay, let's see. Are you seeing a, no, this is not the right one. This is twelve pages. Let me stop sharing here.
You look awfully lonely, Jamie.
I, you know what? I'm not. I'm actually not lonely. There are, there are five people in the audience. You're just, you're just seeing me here. Um, forgive me if you want to, uh, move on here while I struggle to find this document. One moment.
All right. Uh, I think it's relevant, so let's just stick on this.
Okay.
Um, any, Kevin, anything that you want to add based on the inland wetlands recent letter?
Uh, you mind, you want me to talk specifically just about Kevin McGee's letter here?
Uh.
Not, not, not additionally what Jamie's just brought up. Just want to, I mean, I did have one thing to add about Kevin McGee's letter. He does, he does say specifically that the yearly reports go to the town engineer. They, they will not be going to Kevin McGee.
Yeah.
Or they, okay, I just wanted to point that out. Um, I, I think, you know, I mean, this is one of those things we, we put on there and you hope that inspections get done with the way you want them to. Generally, the way these things have worked in the past is that unless town staff actually keeps close tabs, keeps actually a schedule of all the places that need these inspections done, and they stay up with it, generally the inspections don't get done, which I think is probably most of the people's concern here, especially Sean. So generally what happens is the applicants don't usually follow through on, you know, anyhow you, you would discover problems after there's been a breakthrough or something like that. Um, so it's kind of like, I think you put it in here and then fingers crossed you hope that, you know, um, all parties actually get out there and do the inspection when they're supposed to. Um, so other than that, I don't have any comments on Kevin McGee's letter. I think it's pretty self-explanatory.
Uh, I was, I. From the document, uh, and hopefully you're seeing it now on the screen.
Yep, yeah, thank you, Jamie.
Yep.
Um.
Would you like me to read it? Would someone like to read it?
Or we can have read it. Uh, Mr. Phil Johnson, would you like to take this one?
Uh, here it is, just the tag of the Affordable Housing Initiative LLC.
Yes.
At its inland wetlands meeting on May 2nd, 2022, the Guilford Inland Wetlands Commission took the following actions. voted, "The Guilford Inland Wetlands Commission refers favorably to the Planning and Zoning Commission, the rest of the vision shown on map titled Land of Hubbard Road LLC, Hubbard Road Parcel B, Town of Guilford, New Haven County, Connecticut, prepared by LRC Group, re-subdivision map sheet sub dash one dated ten dash six dash twenty-one, last revised two eleven twenty-two, open space plan sheet O S O S P dash one dated four five twenty-two with following recommendations. The commission support, uh, the commission supports the open space slash conservation area along the West River to be deeded to the Town of Guilford or affiliate as shown on the open space plan sheet O S P dash one two, to assure future compliance of stormwater management system. In protecting the adjacent wetlands of West River, the applicant shall file a declaration regarding stormwater management on the land record, which includes a written maintenance and operations manual for all stormwater management systems located in the septic site. The manual should provide provisions for yearly inspection, maintenance of stormwater system, and yearly reports to the town engineer. The maintenance schedule should include, but not be limited to weekly, monthly, quarterly inspections of the property for litter, monitoring the dumpster, and outside storage. Area, areas, or outside, stroke areas, monitoring of the catch basin underground water, stormwater systems, infiltration basins, and removal of accumulated material and non-native invasive species in the swales and energy dissipate. The plan should include a note that the use of de-icing materials should be limited to sand and environmentally friendly compounds. The use, the use of sand environmentally friendly products should be kept minimal. Environmentally friendly products shall consist of calcium, magnesium acetate, calcium chloride or magnesium chloride. The property owner shall coordinate the use of newer and safer products for de-icing with Guilford Inland Wetlands Commission, should these products in the future be available for use. The maintenance, the maintenance plan needs to provide a statement that stormwater management plan will be reviewed annually so that inspection slash maintenance requirements may be noted, may be modified, and that any changes to the plan would require approval of the town engineer and the wetlands enforcement officer. Three, to assure future compliance of sanitary systems, soil air system shown on the plan's tilted block dash one Hubbard Road LLC plan sheet SSDS dash three, last revised February 11th, 2022. In block two dash Connecticut Affordable Housing Initiative LLC plan sheet SSDS dash three, last revised February 11th, 2022. In protecting the adjacent wetlands of West River, the applicant shall file a written maintenance and operation manual for the GeoMatrix soil air system describing the required maintenance and inspections of this system with the Planning and Zoning Commission. Sincerely, Kevin Clark, Chairman, Wetlands Commission, AC, Coleman.
I, I'm sorry to prolong this, but, um, uh, can I, can you put the back down?
Yes, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Forgive me.
So it, it says the maintenance plan needs to provide a statement that the stormwater management plan will be reviewed annually. By whom? I, I just, I don't understand why not an accountability for who is inspecting what. Uh, I know that the, the engineer, the town engineer is, um, involved in this, but there's not a, a chain of accountability so that a maintenance plan is filed with the town? That someone conducts inspection? Is it the zoning enforcement officer or is it the town?
Is it, I mean, using current person and obtaining, that would be Janice Placey, yeah, correct?
Um, Attorney Bloom can, can weigh in on this, but, and also can Kevin Clark, I would ask Commissioner Clark. My understanding is that the inspection, uh, and the maintenance requirements are done by the property owner or a designated engineer, uh, that's working for the property owner. And then those reports are, um, uh, supplied to the town engineer and the wetlands enforcement officer for their approval. So I believe that the inspection happens, uh, by a professional that is, uh, selected by the owner.
Okay, Jamie, but, but if the, if the property owner doesn't file a maintenance report, is there follow-up? Is there a mechanism for follow-up?
Yes, then that would be the town. If the, there's an obligation for the owner to do these inspections and provide the report on an annual basis. If the owner fails to do that or provide the adequate report, then the zoning enforcement officer would be able to take action. And, and also, it's a document that's recorded on the land records on the, the stormwater maintenance. So the obligation is on the owner to set up their schedule, make sure they're doing what they have to do, and then annually reporting to the town. And then the town reviews that report that's provided, and if they're not satisfied with it, then the zoning officer can take action or tell them that some corrective action needs to be done. But that's the thing with this.
So do we, do, Jamie, do we have a, do we have a system in place with the town engineer to recognize if reports have been submitted or have not been submitted?
Yes, yes. I do believe we, we have that system. And just to be clear here, uh, it is the wetlands enforcement officer. I know we, I'm, I'm, I don't mean to parse words here too specifically, but it is not the zoning enforcement officer.
Along with, along with.
It's an enforcement officer of the town, yes, who has the ability to issue cease and desists and citations and those things.
Yeah, but Bill, just tell me, uh, on the right point here, which is if a report is not filed, does it, or something, does it trigger something so that either the town engineer, zoning enforcement officer, the planning and wet, the, the, the wetlands commission, you know, gets noticed that a, that a, that a, that a maintenance report is not filed?
Yeah, I believe that was the point that Attorney Bloom was making, that, that it would be in the realm of, um, the zoning enforcement officer because that violation of, um, the conditions of their.
And I, I think if I heard it right, I think Jamie indicated that there is a system in place, whether it's a reminder system. I mean, I have a database manager program on views that sets up reminders like bing, you know, have you, on this day, have you received a report from them? If not, then you send them a letter or whatever it is. Hopefully, the town has something in place like that.
If it, if it would be helpful.
Well, I, I don't, I don't want, I don't want to, I just don't base it on hopefully. I just, I'd like to know, and I'd like someone to tell us that there is a system, that there is something on calendars for the appropriate town personnel so that if they're not going to have a maintenance report, follow-up.
Sean, I think your, your point is well taken, and I think Jamie and town staff can work on creating, uh, some narrative for this, not only this project, but all future projects that's going to go forward so that.
Past.
Past as well, so that we kind of, as a commission, um, can feel comfortable about, all of this wording. Um, Billy, you seem to raise your hand for a moment.
Uh, I can just say from my own experience that I've created documents like this and have them recorded in, in, in the past and put a, you know, a date that we submitted a report to annually. And then the town keeps track of that somehow on a calendar. That's how you do it. It just, it just becomes part of your maintenance program for the entire project.
Great. Thanks. Thanks for screaming. Um, let's move to another item.
Commissioner, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Chair, Chairperson. Um, I just wanted to, uh, bring everyone's attention to this condition number three. Um, what this is basically, uh, referencing is, um, you know, required maintenance and inspections of a septic system, um, because of a component of a septic system. Um, and perhaps Commissioner Clark, you can speak to, uh, what I'm about to say as well. Um, I feel as though, uh, this, um, the, the, sort of the filing of this would be better placed within perhaps the Water Pollution Control Authority or the Health Department. I just, I just, I read this and I thought, you know, I'm not really sure that this is the purview of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Uh, so I just wanted to raise that for consideration.
You were speaking to the last sentence where it's, uh, required maintenance inspection of the system goes to planning and zoning commission.
Correct.
I, I would, yeah, I'd like to speak on this as well. So the soil air system is part of the septic system and the soil air system of, you know, in the document provided to inland wetlands has the spec sheets of the soil air system and what it does and how it works. It, it's not something that the owner can write a, a, a maintenance or an operation manual. If the geometric soil air system most likely has their own description of what their maintenance and inspection is for the system. Uh, and, and I, I believe that's something that goes with the full septic and with the Health Department, and that would probably be on file with the Health Department as to the, uh, information directly from GeoMatrix. It's not that the, the owner has, does some sort of, uh, creates its own manual. It would become directly from the manufacturer of that system.
Thank you.
This is Bill Freeman. Is it something then that the manufacturer does on an annual basis or a quarterly basis that they inspect the system?
I have Rob Sonnigson on with me. Um, I, if Rob is available, you can answer that. You had dealt with the, uh, spoke with the representative from Soil Air.
Good evening. This is Rob Sonnigson from Walden and Associates. Um, yeah, um, going back to the beginning, addition of Soil Air, which is, uh, a, a system that improves the performance of the wastewater system, uh, was recommended, uh, by our office and adopted and included in the plans. Um, there is absolutely a specification package that comes with the, with the product. Um, the manufacturer is involved in the installation. Um, but this, um, recommendation, um, is for annual maintenance and inspection of the system, which is generally done by an independent, uh, consulting engineer. Um, and, uh, however, you can also involve data from GeoMatrix in the, in the process. It really depends on the preference of the, of the owner. So I think that the idea here is that there will be inspection of the system. Uh, there are standard components to the system, blowers and pumps and, and different, uh, components that are going to be inspected regularly to make sure that they continue to, to operate. And that's something that we would, would be set up in a, in a regular maintenance and inspection and repair, uh, process. So, that's the way it's set up, and it goes with, with the permit that will be coming from the State Department of Public Health and the Town of Guilford Health Department. that are going to be inspected regularly to make sure that they continue to operate. And that's something that we would, would be set up in a, in a regular maintenance and inspection and repair process. So that's the way it's set up, and it goes with, with the permit that will be coming from the State Department of Public Health and the Town of Guilford Health Department. And they're really the ones on a day-to-day basis that are involved with the operation and maintenance of all of these septic systems in town that they have under their authority.
Great.
Thanks, Rob.
Thank you. Jamie, did you have any solution to what you were pointing out or how you wanted to handle? I guess it's not, it's not being proposed as contingent, potentially being proposed as contingent to this approval. It was kind of their recommendation upon us. Do you have any suggestion there?
I will take a first approach at this, and then I'll also ask Attorney Andres if he wants to chime in on this one. I believe this is something that we could, you know, I could go back to the environmental planner as well as the Director of the Health Department and perhaps, you know, ask for this correction, and perhaps we could note it in our, however we decide to move in a condition. But Attorney Andres, I'm not real sure how to handle this change.
Sure, Detective Andres, attorney for the commission. I'll give you my understanding of why we, why this recommendation is number three here and why it was recommended. And it has to do with the different rules of Wetlands Commission versus other commissions. First of all, one of the issues that Wetlands was concerned about was obviously the impact and the health of the Wetlands water courses. There were two Wetlands resources here. And one of the concerns is the, the effect of the nitrogen levels of the effluent and how that impacts the resource, both the Rest River and the other off-site water courses. And there were some, one of the ways that the applicant proposed to mitigate the impacts was by installation of this soil air system, as Mr. Sancho recommended. And, and so that was one of the things that the Wetlands Commission was relying on in, in feeling comfortable in approving this application and, and there's limited knowing paths or limited facts to the Wetlands and water courses because this, this thing on there is going to help reduce the nitrogen that, in the effluent that gets to the resource. So what Wetlands is concerned now is that, hey, we want this thing to be kept, we want it to be maintained. And the reason we have concerns is that unlike zoning permits, Wetlands permits expire. They expire in ten years, there's an statute, partial statute. It is basically permission to do something within a certain time period, and then you, the thing goes away. Whereas zoning, if you approve a subdivision or a site plan, provided they do the work within five years, it lasts four to seven. So you have this issue when something comes before a Wetlands commission that they can't, that may affect the resource, but if the permit is only of a limited duration, then, you know, because the permit expires, hopefully you're sure that the Wetlands will be protected on an ongoing basis. Well, let's ask a commission who has a longer-term authority to impose it as a commission. I mean, that's how I read this, I, and that was one of the things that, hey, guys, this is what they recommended, we just want them to assure that it's maintained, so that it operates as, as presented, so that we don't have this Wetlands objection. And I heard it, Attorney Bloom and, and Sancho indicated, yes, the ongoing issues are part of that. So that is my understanding of what is going on here. What Jamie's raised is, they really, septic aren't they more of a health issue? Your Mr. Sancho addressed that as well. So the state Department of Health and the local health director will lead this. And so maybe ongoing, you know, that, that ongoing sort of septic-related wastewater thing should be more in their hands than in zoning, you know, because more specifically that's what we're talking about. So that's something I think that we look at further, but that's just my understanding of rationale is why this is here, why--
Great, thanks, Chuck.
I'd like to add on that. Chuck, thank you very much for explaining that. You explained it way better than I ever could, very succinctly. I want to add to it that that's exactly what our purpose was, because our permit ends in three years. And basically, there would be no way for us to put any kind of contingency as far as following up on the maintenance of that very crucial pumping system once the CO has been issued, okay? Where you guys in the Health Department will have that ability, okay? Why that's so critical? Well, the site is pretty much maxed out, and in order for them, then the applicant, to meet the 10 milligrams per liter nitrogen the DPH likes to enforce, the only way they could get the conventional septic system to meet that was with this GeoMatrix system. It actually gives them an extra 20% nitrogen reduction, okay, in the treatment. The problem is twofold. One, it involves a lot of pumps and aerators, a lot of moving compartments, so a lot of chance to break down and malfunction. And another problem is, is there's not really any kind, this is a kind of new technology, so in one sense Guilford, we're kind of a guinea pig here. So there's not really any track record to look at as far as the long-term functionality of this kind of system. So there was concern with that. And lastly, one way to keep an eye on these septic systems to make sure they're working, like one way to find out if this pump wasn't working, let's just say that monitoring wasn't being done, whether it be done quarterly or semi-annual or annual basis, would be checking out monitoring wells. What with a DPH system, they don't require monitoring wells. That is one of the positives of a deep system, that they would require monitoring wells to check and make sure the system is actually working properly. So they're, outside of checking this, this GeoMatrix system on a regular basis to make sure it's functioning, there's really no way to tell if it's failing or not. The only way you'd be able to tell is if there'd be, could be a breakout, probably on the, on the slope heading down to the Wetlands on the adjacent property, or there'd be some ponding on the property. It wouldn't necessarily be obvious for quite a while that there was a malfunction. So we just wanted to put in an extra layer of protection. Yes, it's similar to the stormwater management issue, like, okay, is this going to get done or is it not? But we, we at least wanted to address the issue and pass it on to you guys or us in planning and zoning to let you know that this issue was going on and anything that planning and zoning can do, or the Health Department can do to make sure that this thing gets, gets checked on regularly, that that, that's--
Just one question, Kevin, Chuck, Jamie, anyone? Is there any kind of thought that is involved in ensuring that this system has life that it will last?
I mean, I can weigh in on that. This is Jamie. I think that this, this is really a good question for our Director of Health. I know that she has worked with these systems before. I know that septic systems are fully under her purview. I would like, if the commission would like some follow-up regarding this system, we could, we could have Sonia Marino, our Director of Health, weigh in. I have to stress again, this is really the purview of the Health Department.
Great, thanks, Jamie. I think we would like that input. If there's nothing else to review based off of the wetlands and Kim McGee's memo, should we move to the Safe Streets Task Force, Jamie?
That sounds great.
What do you think's best here? I know that we have a couple of letters that kind of support the, the letter that came from Sam Garrett. Should we read Sam Garrett into the, into the record and then if those folks want to--
I believe Sam is with us, and in past discussion, I think Sam was comfortable reading it into the record.
Perfect, great. Bye, Sam.
Can you hear me all right?
We can.
It's, I'm Sam Garrett of the planning and zoning district here in Guilford, and I'm also the Chair of Guilford Safe Streets Task Force. So I've written a letter in support of sidewalks along this development. The Safe Streets Task Force was created by the Board of Selectmen in 2019--
Sam, I'm sorry, I don't want to stop your role, but shall I share the memo? Would you like--
Oh, sure, yeah, go ahead.
Okay, great.
I got it, I got it, Jamie.
Oh, great, thanks, thanks, Scott.
Hey, go ahead, Sam.
Okay, so the Safe Streets Task Force was created by the Board of Selectmen in 2019 to improve the scope and safety of non-moverized transportation in Guilford. One important ongoing effort within the task force is the identification of opportunities for the town to improve connectivity of residential properties to schools, public transportation, centers of commerce, and other points of interest. In support of this effort, in 2021, we hired Kimberly Schmidt to update the town's transportation plan and for the first time, provide a comprehensive townwide plan focused on non-moverized transportation. The Guilford Safe Streets reports were submitted to the Board of Selectmen in March 2022, and it can be found at the website listed there. So Hubbard Road is clearly identified as a priority for the construction of sidewalks based on the criteria highlighted below. First of all, proximity to schools. The proposed development is 0.8 miles from Adams Middle School, and a sidewalk is currently under construction on Church Street to connect Adams to Hubbard Road. It's 1.3 miles from the A.W. Cox Elementary School and 1.8 miles from Guilford High School. Two, proximity to public transportation. The proposed development is 1.2 miles from the Connecticut Transit Bus Stop at the Route 1 State Street intersection, providing access to New Haven to the west and Madison to the east, and 2.2 miles from the Guilford Train Station, providing Shoreline East access to New Haven and beyond, and to the west and, and New London to the east. Now, given that a portion of this development is dedicated to affordable housing, we believe that access to public transportation is particularly a challenge. Three, proximity to centers of commerce and other points of interest. The proposed development is 0.4 miles from the Guilford Racket and Swim Club and Guilford Arts Center, 0.8 miles from Bishop's Orchard, 1.1 miles from Boston Point Close Road, which is a center of commerce, and 1.4 miles from the historic Guilford Green, and 1.5 miles from Westwood's Dump Rock Trailhead. And, you know, that's a network of about 40 miles of type of trails. Personally, as a resident who lives one mile from Hubbard Road, I've walked, run, and cycled along this road, and I can personally attest to the need for sidewalks. Due to the industry represented by the safety zone and the schoolhouse depot on Hubbard Road, the behavior of traffic often consists of large trucks and buses, and walking on the road itself feels unsafe. I guess I should also note that this development's going to generate more traffic on Hubbard Road as well. While it's true that the proposed sidewalk will not initially be connected to sidewalks in the immediate, to the immediate east and west of the development, these sidewalk projects are often carried out in a piecemeal fashion, and this project in particular will impart a sense of urgency of future sidewalk expansion on Hubbard Road and here. Finally, I just want to note that on March 16th, 2020, the Board of Selectmen unanimously approved the attached Complete Streets Resolution, which directs town boards and commissions to ensure elements of complete streets and their work. Given the previous planning and zoning discussions and the letter from the town engineer about this development, your support of complete streets and review of this application is both recognized and appreciated. Me as a task force strongly supports the construction of sidewalks on the Hubbard Road. Sincerely, Sam Garrett, to Guilford.
Thanks, Sam. Attorney Bloom, do you want to speak to, have you, I think you had a conversation with Jamie Stein about sidewalks on this property?
There's other water--
Yeah, there's two other letters that are basically confirming, they're basically following up on Sam's assertions. One from Kimberly Schmidt and--
One from Tim Sperry.
And one from Tim Sperry as well.
Kimberly Schmidt is on.
Hi, Kimberly, do you want, and I'm sure what Sam's put in there.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Kimberly, it's Jamie. I'm just saying that the other letter writer is in the room, so once you have finished, you can, thank you.
Yeah, so Kimberly Schmidt, 140 Wildrose Avenue, also a member of the Safe Streets Task Force. And I wanted to add that we have a key initiative among safe streets called mobility equity. And what mobility equity means is we strive to ensure that people have safe access to amenities and public transportation, whether that be on foot, bike, or car. The Hubbard Housing location is in a prime central location, and the addition of the sidewalk enables mobility equity for its residents. Also note that in Guilford, it is legal to bike on sidewalks. Second point is that there is some precedent here. Safe Streets Task Force and Planning and Zoning reached out to the State Street affordable housing developer and asked them to include sidewalks along their frontage. The developer agreed. The Town of Guilford also agreed to extend the sidewalk up to, on State Street, up to the new development. So I would like to propose the same here, ask the Hubbard housing developer to include sidewalks on frontage, ask the Town of Guilford to extend the sidewalk on Hubbard, you know, from Church Street on Hubbard to meet up with the new development. And then additionally, I'd also like to propose that the Safe Streets Task Force fund a pedestrian, bike pedestrian connection from Apple Tree Lane to Hubbard Road. Apple Tree Lane is another affordable housing development on the north side of Hubbard. And so, yeah, we would connect, yeah, another affordable housing development into the town center. That's it.
Thanks, Kimberly. Jamie, did, I just very want to--
Would you like to come forward?
Come up to the mic.
Come up to the mic, state your name and your address, please, for the record.
Okay. Tim Sperry, 22 Broad Street, Guilford. I want to second the comments made by Sam Garrett and Kimberly Schmidt of the Safe Streets Task Force, of which I am also a member. Sidewalks are vital to the health of a community as they provide the means for residents to move to and from activities without the use of a car. They are vital to the health of a community as they enable people to get much-needed exercise through walking. The residents of this Hubbard Road community deserve that opportunity as well. The town is actively doing its part to increase the sidewalk network with the under-construction Church Street extension to Hubbard Road and the in-plans extension of the Boston Street sidewalk all the way to Route 1. We are asking the developers to build a link in the Hubbard Road sidewalk so that we will eventually connect, we, the town, that is, connect Church Street to Long Hill Road, opening up safe walking for many who live in the area. The developers are being asked to add approximately $33,000 to the cost of this multimillion-dollar project. That money will construct a 672-foot sidewalk at a five-foot width across the front of the property. The common notion is it's $10 per square foot, which Michael from the engineer's office provided me with. Seen another way, we are asking them to add $330 to the cost of each apartment. Seen through the lens of a 30-year loan, that is $9.61 per apartment per year. It will not materially impact this project's costs at all, and is certainly not a discriminatory action against this project. It will materially impact this project by increasing its attractiveness as a place from which they can walk to certain activities. Walkability is an asset, not a liability in 2022 America. And as Kim said, we in the task force are committed to working with the town to build out the links as we develop pedestrian mobility through a broader swath of Guilford. We are simply asking this developer and others to take this small step and partner with us in adding this vital asset. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sperry.
Mr. Chairman, we have another gentleman who would like to speak on this matter, if you'd grant that.
Sure, just specific to sidewalks.
Specific to sidewalks, yes, please come and introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Brad Kronstadt, 42 Cornwall Lane in Guilford. I'm a member of the Shoreline Greenway Trail, I'm also co-chair of the Guilford team of the trail, and we strongly support the sidewalk on Hubbard. We think for the developer would be a big benefit, as was just stated, to the residents as well as the other members of town, and the cost would be minimal, and we support the town extending the sidewalk to complete it between Durham Road and Long Hill Road. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, back to you, Attorney Bloom. Have you been able to discuss the, just put the sidewalk up with your client?
Yeah, so, well, I understand the big comments about mobility, equity, and safety with sidewalks. So, and I did look through the entire Safe Streets Record, and the, the short-term traffic calming recommendations were first to narrow the lanes on Hubbard Road. If I can have Jamie pull up a picture of Hubbard Road in the area that abuts the proposed property as well as across the street.
Sure, Attorney Bloom, just one more.
Thank you.
I've been struggling to find my documents today. I believe you shared it with me here. Let me do that.
So while Jamie's looking for that picture, so the bridge over the river has a sidewalk on the opposite side of the street. The area on the opposite side of Hubbard Road, there we are. So the bridge is right on the opposite side where there is a sidewalk. As you can see, the property that abuts the project on the opposite side, there's absolutely no way to put in a sidewalk unless the town is looking to reconstruct this bridge. If you have a sidewalk that fronts the property of this development, it's going to end before this bridge, probably right by that guardrail, and then you're going to have children riding their bikes or walking in a street around a blind corner. I drove down this road five times yesterday, and you cannot see around that corner. Now, coming from Route 77 towards Long Hill on the opposite side, the north side, that is an area where the sidewalk should go. I believe in safe streets, I believe in safety for our children, our pedestrians, but there is a wide shoulder on the opposite side of the street, very narrow on the side where the development is, and there's already a sidewalk there at the bridge. I don't see how we could be putting in a sidewalk on our side of the street. We could put in a crosswalk and maybe put some little curving area where the entrance way is for people to stand and wait, and then they can cross the street, the crosswalk, to get to the sidewalk on the other street. I currently live on Boston Street, and the area where I live on Boston Street, there's no sidewalk on my side of the street. I have to, and no crosswalk either where I am, but I cross Boston Street to go on the sidewalk to go into the center of town. I believe that sidewalk, I understand everybody's concern, and I appreciate what Mr. Sperry said about what he believed the cost of the sidewalk to be, and, you know, cost is not the factor here, it's for safety. And putting in a sidewalk that goes nowhere and leads to trouble is dangerous. So we do not believe that there should be a sidewalk on our side of that street. We believe that the sidewalk on Hubbard Road should be on the north side of the street where there already is a sidewalk where that bridge is.
Two points. Jamie, I think in our discussion earlier, I don't think that there's a memo from Janice, but there was a discussion that you have with Janice about this actual point.
Yes.
Could you bring that up for us, please?
Yeah, I mean, so we did discuss, you know, as an alternative, perhaps to a full street frontage sidewalk, the idea of, you know, creating certain elements that would enhance pedestrian safety. Attorney Bloom did refer to a crosswalk that would enable pedestrians to get safely from the affordable housing development to the northern part of the road where the sidewalk is already sort of shown in place. I encouraged, and also Janice did offer, to meet with the developer and discuss options if that is where we would like to go.
Yeah, I think Attorney Bloom, you mentioned that essentially what's being described is having an ADA pad on either side of the drive to the property, one that could eventually have a crosswalk added to it in future. Also, the second point I have is, while your points were taken of going north towards the bridge, there still probably would be some value, based off of the comments from the Safe Streets Task Force, there seems like they would see some value in a crosswalk, in a sidewalk that goes south towards Long Hill Road that could eventually be linked up to future links of the town.
Can I address that?
Sure.
Okay.
I agree, you know, that this seems like a link to nowhere, but this road is going to get busier and busier, and at some point, it's going to be advantageous to have sidewalks on both sides of the street. And we will, you know, we're going to start addressing various links in the chain over time, and it would be nice if you could accede to simply building it and let the town figure out otherwise. As far as crossing, we're going to be putting in a crossing on Boston Street when we do the extension. We're going to be putting a crossing in on Route 77. There are technological means for putting in traffic calming devices. It's not like the only route is on the north side across the street. And I think, again, to fight against a $33,000 expenditure to help build out a network for safe walking in this community, just, it strikes me as kind of penny wise and pound foolish. Thank you.
Any commissioners that want to lay in on this subject?
I think, sorry. I think, one of the other--
Johnson.
Phil Johnson, sorry. One of the other points that was brought up at the last meeting had to do with kids waiting for school buses. And I don't think you can argue that it's, you know, it's probably safer to have them waiting on the sidewalk for a school bus than just adjacent to the property. I just keep coming back to that in my mind.
Thanks, Bill. Bill Freeman?
Hi, Bill Freeman. Jamie, is it a requirement of the, in the regulations, that they provide a sidewalk along that street?
I thought you may ask that, so I did actually pull up that section.
I actually heard that as well.
Attorney Bloom.
There are no requirements.
Well, I'm gonna, if you'll indulge me here, let me pull up that portion and share. Sorry, my sharing game is off with the hybrid mode. So, I mean, within the Guilford subdivision code, there is this section that discusses sidewalks. You know, the commission may require sidewalks to be installed when they are deemed necessary for public safety and when one of the following conditions exists. I know that the interpretation here could be that it is within the subdivision itself, but there is a certain set of conditions here that are listed.
No, I mean, it says that the commission may require when they are deemed necessary and when one of the following conditions exists, and we don't have one through six. None of those conditions exist.
As I mentioned in the previous meeting, Attorney Bloom, we could make the argument that the public facility does exist across at the, at the bus.
There's a sidewalk on the bridge. I mean, how can you say that?
If we don't have frontage at that sidewalk, I'm not sure what you're talking about. If you want to, and it's meant for interior lots, when you have a subdivision for the interior aspect of the head. There's case law on that.
I think the differentiation, again, Bill Freeman, is that if you're doing a subdivision and you're creating a road that will become a top road, then it is often included to have sidewalks, at least on one side. I think the fact that this is not an existing road that has a sidewalk on the other side of the road already that was designed by somebody, that that is where the sidewalk is supposed to go initially, unless the town wants to make, you know, go forward, as they did with the other project mentioned before, and offer to bring this sidewalk all the way up there. I don't think it's, I don't feel comfortable asking applicants to do things that are not within the purview of our regulation.
Okay. Kevin, any comment for you?
No.
All right, we're gonna move forward. And was there any other, I don't believe there's any items from town staff or anything related to this?
I don't believe so. The only other item I had to discuss, Attorney Bloom brought up regarding the affordability plan and that discussion with the Guilford Housing Authority.
Sure. The, you did mention Attorney Bloom, affordability plan. Is there any, so is there a set of state regulations that are going to regulate the affordability of these units? Is there a time limit on it? Can you speak to that, please?
Yes, it's been restricted for 40 years. It follows the state statute 8-30G. The affordability plan that was filed with the application is per the state statute, and in that affordability plan, it has in it every single guideline on what's income, how people are verified, all of the parameters that are set forth in the regulations and the statute on the affordability units.
Okay. One thing I would add, Scott, I'm thinking about a little bit, you know, I understand Attorney Bloom's point, the pictures about the sidewalk to nowhere, it may look like it doesn't make any sense to add a sidewalk. I kind of get it. At the same token, you know, we have this affordable housing project, supposed to be like this feel-good project, right? They get to cut, because they're affordable housing, they get to cut certain corners of local planning and zoning. But then you've got people in town, whether it be town staff, town commissions, like the sidewalk crew, who, this is their job, they're looking at the big picture. I don't see why, just out of good faith, put in the sidewalk. Why not? I don't see the big deal, it's not, it's not an egregious cost, an enormous cost. Why not just, like, in the spirit of doing this, you know, feel-good project, put in the sidewalk, and then let the powers that be who handle the sidewalks tie into it if and when they feel necessary? I don't know. That's my general thought on that. Doesn't hurt.
Thanks, Kevin.
Thank you.
I would just like to reply to that comment.
Sure.
You know, again, a sidewalk that just ends is a hazard, and I believe the town engineer looking at this realizes that. There's no room, unless the town is going to redo that bridge and widen the road there like they did on Sawmill and put in a whole new bridge, you can't have a sidewalk there. There's no room for a sidewalk, and there's no way for the town to make connection for that sidewalk. And that's all I have to say.
I agree, but these people specialize in this, and they sit on it.
Right. Thank you, Kevin. That was going to be my point as well. This is the purview of the task force, this is the recommendation that's, again, handed down from the Board of Selectmen and so on and so forth. So, I, while I hear your opinion, Attorney Bloom, especially, again, the points we'll take from Kevin as well. Did any commissioners have any other questions about affordability part of the piece of Any other questions in general for commissioners? We'll open up to public. So first, public questions. Again, if you're in, if you're at the room, then you can just let Jamie know that you're just in, asking a question. If you're on the Zoom, then you can either raise your hand or make yourself available on Zoom to ask a question. First questions first, please. Seeing no questions, I can do it. Yep, Sam, you want to ask?
I'm just trying to find a better way to phrase this, but, so my understanding from Attorney Bloom for not putting sidewalks in front of the development is because you would have to have a crosswalk to get to the sidewalk that's on the bridge on the other side of the street. Am I correct in understanding?
There's no room or any way to put a sidewalk. The sidewalk would end--
Yes.
--well before that guardrail, okay? A child riding his bike is going to continue off the sidewalk and in the road, and then that child's going around that corner there, or somebody walking. That's dangerous to be on that side.
What if it's a resident in your development?
The resident in the development would go over the crosswalk in front of the development to the sidewalk that the town puts in on the opposite side of the road on its property.
And so what's the difference between the sidewalk on the opposite side of the street?
It's already there.
Wouldn't move that's wrong.
The sidewalk's already there on that bridge, and there's room on that side, and there's a very large shoulder, if you look at it, it's meant for the whole--
I think we're just arguing about where the crosswalk is going to be, because I can see a perfectly easy way of building the sidewalk in front of your development and then put the crosswalk where the sidewalk ends.
Thank you. Any other questions for this application? We'll move to anyone that wants to speak in favor of the application? And is there anyone that wants to speak in opposition to that application?
Quick question before we get down to the next question. Are we going to propose waiting on hearing on comments from the town engineer, believe that we were talking about that?
Yeah, thanks, Phil. I was going to cover that after--
Sorry.
--from everyone. It looks like there's a Pamela who has a statement.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, if you can say your name and address correctly.
Pamela Bisby Simons, 57, Spencer Avenue, Guilford. And I just strongly support the Safe Streets recommendation to provide sidewalks, frankly, wherever we can in our town, and especially with this wonderful link that will connect eventually kids in the middle school to the high school, which, if we could just get more young people out there biking safely, then we're helping with their health and we're providing connections for them to go downtown eventually through what's happening on Route 77. I mean, these are wonderful, positive directions that the Safe Street team is providing, and I just urge you all to support this. And frankly, Attorney Bloom, I really feel that every developer should provide a sidewalk in front of their developments that would be accessible and lead to further sidewalks connecting them in the opposite direction. So I think it's the best thing we can do for our town. Thank you, man.
Thank you, Pamela. Any other comments for against?
I believe there may be a comment from the room.
Avery, thanks, Jamie.
So, I actually do want to speak up in favor of this project. When it first came out, I was excited. I think it's something we need more of in this town, but I have to say that the reluctance to, and the pushback on a $33,000 sidewalk that will be connected to other sidewalks that will benefit the residents of this community, the immediate facility, it's baffling. So I still remain in support of the project, and I think you should go ahead, but I do encourage the commission to say, could you spend just a little bit of money to help people get around and increase mobility in this town? Thank you.
Anything else from the room?
I don't believe--
I don't believe so.
Great. Thanks. Before we talk about closing the public hearing on this, I did just want to mention for all that are listening that, as you heard during this second public hearing, there's still some items that we need input from, from Janice Plaziac, as well as I think we're gonna have our attorney Chuck Andrews review the wording of future motions and that sort of thing. So while we'll be closing the public hearing on this item, and we might do a small amount deliberating during our regular meeting, the expectations that we'll vote on this future date. Jamie, can you remind me how many days we have to vote on this issue?
I think Chuck can help me out with this in terms of the timeframe. Chuck?
Sure, yeah. Sixty-five days after the close of the hearing, so you got that.
Thank you.
So, a quick question. Can we accept additional information after we close the public hearing or do we want to continue to the next meeting?
You can accept comments from staff that doesn't involve new factual information.
Correct.
Do we know whether this is gonna bring us new factual information, do we?
Well, I mean, Chuck, just simply for the act of us requesting the information from Janice, doesn't that make it not new?
It depends. And I mean, there's sort of two issues here. One, if Janice is just reviewing information that's already in the record and commenting on it, then that's okay. I think the other issue is you wanted, you know, the health director on the subject issue to comment on the maintenance thing. Again, I suppose that's something already in the record. So those are the, but I'm not quite sure if she's introducing new data that the applicant hasn't seen or so forth. So that's sort of one issue. The other issue is, does the applicant, you know, want the hearing to stay open so that the applicant has a chance to respond to anything that the staff comes up with?
No, we'd like to close the hearing. I believe what we're looking for is the health department in terms of if they're gonna monitor the soil air system and what Janice Plaziac has to say. I don't think it's anything new or additional than what's already been said. So, you know, we would like to close the hearing.
Okay. Then, if, if she's good with that and that's what we're doing, then I think there's absolutely no problem closing the hearing.
So does that answer your question?
That's all right. I just wanted to make sure that we could accept any additional information. So if I.
And Phil and, I'm fine with 55 days from closing.
Okay, thank you. So all that being said, I didn't entertain a motion to close the public hearing on this issue.
So move.
Second.
All of you, please. Sean Cosgrove.
Aye.
Bill Freeman.
Yes.
Phil Johnson.
Yes.
Kevin Clark. Do you read it? And all of us, yes, as well. Thank you. Thanks to everyone involved. Appreciate all your comments. We'll move forward to David Lissio, 134 Trolley Road, map eight, lot seventy-four, done R2 coastal site plan to add a second floor and patio off the massive bedroom. Is there someone here representing David Lissio?
Yeah, no, me. I don't.
Mr. and Mrs. Lissio have been waiting patiently here. Thank you.
Hi, I'm David.
Thank you for waiting. I appreciate it.
No, thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. Do you want me to sit around for any deliberations that you have or?
I don't believe so, no. I imagine that'll be on a later date. Thank you.
Okay. Before Chuck goes, Mr. Chair, we were also down in the regular meeting for the pending application for the site plan. However, I believe we've put everything together through the public hearing, so that, that item is then, has already been heard so that we're not needed to go forward on that. Is that correct?
Yeah, I think the expectation is that we're gonna continue to the next meeting. Not continue to public, but we're gonna, we're gonna deliberate, just basically continue our deliberation to the next meeting.
Okay. All right. So we're, we're okay to leave the meeting now then?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for your patience.
Thank you, Chuck.
All right. Mr. Lissio, thank you for your patience. Anything you want to do?
Would you like Igor to pull up the drawings or would you like me to do that?
You could, please, if you don't mind.
Oh, sure. Give me, sorry, moment.
No worries.
Are you laughing at me, Sean?
I am. I am kidding. I love you all the time.
I gotta go. I'm modeling through here. Terribly sorry. Hang on, I'm gonna get there. Let's see. I have an architectural that was revised, I believe.
Yeah. You have the nearest one?
Four twenty-six?
That's the one.
Okay, terrific. Let me pull this up for you. Just take a minute here. I will expand here. Oh, too much expansion. There we go. And I will now share this with everyone. There we go.
Okay, everyone has it?
Yes.
Hey, good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. As you know, I'm David Lissio. My wife Debra's here as well. 134 Trolley Road. We're potentially looking to add a second story to this beautiful home we just purchased. And I received an email from Janice Plaziac, and I'm just gonna read it. It's a pretty short one. David, I would need an appraisal for the building and a detailed scope and schedule of values for the work to be done to the building. The assessor's field card values the building at $94,923. The building permit you applied for is for $250,000, not including mechanical, electrical, and plumbing work, which it really is. Therefore, it is determined to be a substantial improvement requiring compliance based on what has been submitted. Please provide the documentation requested and then we can see if the change in construction is needing, needed or a meeting is needed. Now, I provided that information about a week ago. The appraisal, which shows the house at 1.1 million. I just purchased it in September. The structure at $600,000, which gives me 50%. What I'm looking at is $300,000 to do the project. You know, I have estimates from the builder and all the other estimates, which are at 250 right now. So, I mean, that's what I, I submitted those to everyone on the list. The interim town planner, Janice, of course, Jamie, you were on the list, Kimberly, Norman. Yes, so those are the people that were on the email that I submitted those, those two. So, I mean, we've been.
So, Mr. Lissio, I think, do you want to briefly describe what you're looking to do? It seems like you, can you describe for us?
Yes, absolutely. So basically, this, this home, we're, we want to perform selective demolition of the roof. It's a flat-roofed house right now and it has concrete walls. We had, you know, we had the structural guy look at it and the engineer architect. They, you know, we're gonna retain all the ceiling joists and rebuild the second, and, you know, rebuild with a second floor for current and modern code compliance and safety. Frame first and second floor per plans from Dan Webster, the architect. There's minimal renovations to the first floor for wheelchair access. My poor wife has MS. So we want to make the house very easily ADA compliant and, and make the rooms a little bigger to improve flow and make it more habitable. So we're not adding any bedrooms or bathrooms. We are adding a powder room, so I back up on that. But, so it is basically a second story to a flat-roofed house. And, you know, and of course, some, you know, aesthetics, you know, to make it look nice. So that's basically what it is.
I know that we have a couple memos from, there's one from Janice Plaziac. Kevin Clark, would you like to read this one for us?
Sure. Did you do it off? Let me just see if I can find it.
Sure.
I got it. Yep. Oh, thank you. Give me a short one. I appreciate that. Okay. To planning and zoning from Janice Plaziac, the town engineer, date April 19th, 2022, RE 134 Trolley Road. I have reviewed the coastal site plan for the above referenced property. The proposed project has some flood clean management compliance issues that need to be addressed by the applicant. Therefore, I suggest the planning and zoning commission delay action on this application. I have made the applicant aware of these issues via email.
Jamie, do you want to speak to that in a little bit more detail, please?
Sure. I mean, I think as Mr. Lissio stated, you know, as we all know, the assessed, the town assessor's value is quite low for all properties in town currently. So the work that was proposed was in exceedance of more than 50% of that assessed value. So Janice did advise, as Mr. Lissio stated, that the, an appraisal be sought. And Mr. Lissio did provide that appraisal. I think at this point, Janice would just like some more time to review the appraisal and the proposed work. And that, I believe, is why she has requested a bit of an extension for us not to move on this until the May 18th meeting. Also, just to be clear, we're, this is, this is sort of that trigger where if improvements are more than 50% of the value of the home, we, the, the owner would have to consider FEMA compliance. So that is the, the question at hand here, which I'm not completely sure of, but may involve elevating the structure if that is indeed the case.
Well, that's what she said until she asked for the, you know, this, the appraisal and so forth, which I said, you know, I just paid a million dollars for the home. So I mean, that, but her, her email was prior to this, prior to me sending all the stuff to her. So I think it was, you know, it was kind of like in between everything. So.
Yeah, I think the, the timing of, you know, sort of the memo that we received from Janice, the follow-up from Mr. Lissio, and the ability for Janice to review what had been submitted.
Right.
Has kind of happened in succession that now the ask is put forth that we
Sure.
delay acting until May 18th.
Also, a reminder to all that this being coastal site plan application, then there is a requirement of having two public hearings.
Oh, okay.
So, so it's not exactly a continuation or anything, extension of what we normally would require for something like this.
Gotcha.
Sorry, Scott. I'm not sure if coastal site plan requires two. Just.
I was submitted. That was submitted.
Well, either way, just.
I believe my discussions with Jamie was.
Okay, sorry.
For coastal site plans. Jamie, incorrect in that special thing?
Lisa, I feel shaking her head. Am I incorrect, Lisa?
Okay, that's fine. Well, we can have the discussion as a group then, too. I think there's one more town note from the town planner to discuss this item. Sean Cosgrove, would you like to read this one for us, please? Oh, no, that's, that's, that's a different, sorry, there isn't one. All of that. That's it. Okay. Any, any questions from commissioners on this item? Mr. Phil Johnson?
Nope.
Nope.
Just, I just want to make sure I'm understanding the numbers right. The, the home was purchased for $985,000 last September. And they're declaring that the 1,755 square foot existing structure contemplates $600,000 of that from a 1969 structure?
Well, I mean, that's, the appraisal shows the house appraising at 1.1 and the structure at 600. That's what the appraisal shows.
There's a difference between assessment and appraisal, appraising.
Right.
Understand. I just.
I mean, I pay 15,000 in taxes. I don't know how that, how my house is worth $94,000 if I'm paying 15,000 in taxes.
I understand. I hear you completely on that. It's just generally the ratio of an older house to a waterfront lot is not a 50/50 number. If you look at a lot of other waterfront properties.
Well, it's not even, it's a small, tiny little piece of property. But you can see it shows, the appraisal shows it all on there, you know? It shows the property, it shows the house. It shows the depreciation for the value of the house as an older home of 300,000. I mean, I think is what the depreciation was. And at the end of it, it comes down to that number as shown in the appraisal. I mean, that's always able to get a mortgage and so forth. So, you know.
Okay, Jamie, what is our look back period on
It's five years.
improvement?
It's five years.
Five years.
So do we know what, if any, work has been done or permitted in the last five years?
I'm sure we could figure that out, but I don't know. And that would be something that Janice.
I don't believe so. The house is beautiful inside. I mean, it's, I think the appraisal shows the pictures of the house. I mean, it's, it's really, the outside, you know, it's a flat-roofed house and it's, it's beautiful. They kept the house perfect. I mean, hardwood floors and beautiful windows. I mean, it's, it's just a gorgeous house. Yeah, so.
Thanks. Any other questions from commissioners?
I think I'm good. So the, so the May 28th meeting, you think you can? Oh, 18th, 18th, okay.
Thank you. Is there any questions from the audience?
No.
Again, through Zoom, you'll need to make yourself unmuted. Is there anyone that wants to speak in favor of this application? And is there anyone that wants to speak in opposition to this application? Okay. It sounds like due recommendation from town staff and the recommendation is that we continue. What's the temperature of the commission? Are we, is everyone in favor of kind of going in that direction?
Agreed. I mean, we don't have a copy of the appraisal to even look at, do we?
Yes.
We do?
It just, it just got to the, just got to Jamie recently.
Okay, sure. I'll take a peek at that. That would be.
I sent it.
Yes, you did. I wasn't sure if that was meant to be communicated to the commission or to Janice. So if, if you would like, I can, I can make sure that it is available to the commission.
So, all, one last thing is I am a contractor. I've been a contractor for 36 years and, you know, pretty know, I know what I'm doing when it comes to this. So, I, I mean, I, I got the, the appraisals and, I mean, the, the proposals and everything. So, you know, it's all, it's all there.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, no problem.
I entertain a motion from commissioners to continue this to the May 18th meeting.
So move.
Second.
Bill, Bill Whitehall, Bill Freeman.
Yes.
Sean Cosgrove.
Aye.
Phil Johnson.
Yes.
Kevin Clark.
Yes.
And all of, also both yes. Last public hearing item is Town and Guilford Public Works, 50 driveway, map 34th, lot 17 dash one, so I want coastal site plan for a construction of a 23-foot by 17-foot by 80-foot length building. Is there anyone from the town to discuss this item?
Scott, the dimensions in the memo don't fit.
Mentions in one, map other one.
McKenney, it says 35 by 17 by 6.
Yeah, 34 by 17 by 6, correct. Well, 23 is what it says here on the, I don't know what was in the.
I'm fairly happy on this plan. I can apply that. So I'd like to draw a line in the assistant town engineer. It's, the current plan is a 34-foot wide by 60-foot long by 17-foot high hoop house. So, 23 is not correct.
Kevin Clark, correct. Okay.
Jamie, do you, do you, Michael, are you prepared to put up a picture of the plan?
Yeah, I can show it. If you don't mind.
Yep, go right in.
All right. So, so as you might remember, so 50 driveway here. This is also, this is the site of our new fuel station. Currently, that project has not started yet. Unfortunately, due to some supply chain issues. We have purchased that system and we're just waiting for it to arrive. You can see here, this is that location. So in the meantime, we're looking to clean up the site to better organize some more equipment. And part of that includes constructing a 34-foot by 60-foot hoop, hoop building, which basically it looks similar to this. This is, this is a different size, but it'll basically look this, look like this. We also propose including a door on the front of it, it'd be a roll-up door, just to provide more. just to provide, uh, more cooling for some of our equipment.
And, and is this, is this conceived as a temporary building?
Correct. So this, so as you also may know, uh, we're looking at, uh, moving our public works facility, uh, near future. So this is something that can be installed temporarily and then when we plan to move, we can.
So, um, just to clarify, I mean, near future is a relative term. Um, how, um, how long will this hoop structure, how long is expected to last through the weather of this climate?
Uh, it depends. I mean, generally, before this may last as long as needs to, which it could be ten to fifteen years.
Okay, thank you. That, that, that was my main question. I just didn't want to have you say two to three years.
No, no, it should definitely last much longer than that, so.
Thank you.
Unless any hurricanes come through, I don't think, I think we'll be okay now. Um, so, some of the equipment that we're looking to store here, so I do have a list, currently some of this equipment is stored outside, uh, some of it's stored in the other, uh, public works, uh, uh, buildings. Uh, so that includes wood chipper, uh, road compactor, compressor, sand blasting machine, tractors, uh, some, our, our road speakers, um, winter maintenance, uh, equipment, Sanders, plows, uh, and also some of the parks and recreation equipment that they have.
And so this, this would expect to extend the length of those, that, those pieces of machinery based on the fact that they're in their coverage?
Correct. Yeah, by leaving things, uh, exposed to elements, it, it's generally, you know, it required, required more maintenance to these, um, equipment, uh, and could, you know, some of these equipment may have to be replaced sooner than expected and leave them outside for too long. So by having a hoop building for these to be placed, uh, getting out of the elements, that's, um, could be greatly helpful for, um, for the equipment.
Thank you. Thanks. Um, I believe we have a question from Matthew.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Michael, great job in describing, uh, the nature of this project. Uh, showing to your earlier question, uh, yeah, this is anticipated to be, uh, short-term, even though this facility will last for longer than we hope we need it to. Uh, as Michael can probably tell you, we're doing test pits up, uh, on the property the town purchased on Route eighty and Long Hill Road, which is hopefully the site of the new public works park and rec, uh, maintenance facility. Uh, so this is a temporary measure in order to, uh, to provide additional storage, as Michael indicated, to protect some of the equipment that, that our taxpayers have, uh, have purchased and, uh, we need to continue to protect. And, uh, it, it, at this point, uh, it also afforded us an opportunity, uh, to potentially move some of the equipment that is currently at the old public works facility, uh, on Graves Avenue, uh, to allow us to do something, uh, you know, potentially uh, dynamic with that, uh, piece of property. So I just want to lend my support to this. I think my name is actually on the application, uh, and, uh, I want to thank Michael for representing me, uh, as well as he did. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Um, we have one memo here from, uh, Kevin McGee, so Michael, if you'd like to finish sharing your screen. I'll bring this one up and this one, Sean, uh, Mr. Cosgrove will be the one to hear. Actually, oh, he's gone. Uh, Phil Johnson, would you mind reading this for me?
Certainly. Uh, RE, this is from Kevin McGee, and I'm our planner. RE Coastal Area Management Review, Town of Guilford. The Town of Guilford is proposing to install a thirty-four by seventeen by sixty foot hoop building for the storage of maintenance equipment and create an area for public works and parks and recreation equipment. The proposed work is located approximately one hundred feet away from Title III. The coastal resource policies applicable for the property are shorelands, coastal hazard area, and title weapons. Erosion sedimentation control measures have been installed. The majority of the proposed work area and equipment storage area is located in an area that has been previously disturbed. The work is being conducted could have minor impact upon adjacent coastal resources if erosion and sedimentation control measures are not properly maintained. In order to make sure the coastal resources are protected, I recommend the following conditions of approval. One, the Town of Guilford zoning enforcement officer should be notified to inspect sedimentation and erosion control measures prior to site construction. Any soil stockpiles should be contained by silt fencing or hay bales. Soil erosion and sedimentation control measures shall be maintained until vegetation is established or suitable material is installed to the satisfaction of zoning enforcement.
Thank you. Is there anything else, Jamie, that needs to be read to the, to this item?
No.
Um, any other questions, commissioners? Any questions from the audience? Any, uh, anyone that would want to speak in favor? Oh, it looks like there's a question from, oh, is that Pete with five-minute warning?
Yes, yes, sorry. That's our, that's our videographer giving us the five-minute warning. Good eye.
Okay. Um, any, anyone, uh, that wants to speak in favor of this item? Uh, anyone that would like to speak opposed? All right, seeing none, I, I entertain a, uh, motion. Well, Jamie, so can you confirm, I think when we discussed this one, we thought that we were going to need to do a three, three-quarter vote to suspend the second public hearing on this item, is that correct? Or is this just a one?
Um, if Lisa is not sure.
That's, the only things I've required to are special permit. So site plans, I, I, if I'm putting my chips on a file.
I would, I would defer to Lisa and Phil on this one.
All right, thank you, fellas, for your input on our matter. I entertain a vote to coastal.
But I don't need chips.
I'm all in.
I entertain a motion to impose public hearing on this item.
Go vote.
Go vote.
Uh, other roll call, Bill Freeman?
Yes.
Kevin Clark?
Yes.
Phil Johnson?
Yes.
Sean Cosgrove?
Aye.
And I'll also, yes. Um, that'll conclude the public hearing for this. Then should we then change out the tape?
Yeah, so we take a little break. Thank you.
Take a break. Thanks, everyone.
Scott, I'm looking at Peter, uh, the, the video. Why are we recording this on Zoom while we have the videographer on?
Great.
Hello, we're back live on the, uh, video. Uh, I just wanted to reiterate for everyone that no business was conducted, um, during the brief hiatus. Phil, do you want to doubly answer a question?
I'm curious, why, why we're recording this on Zoom and it can be then posted on the GCTV site as a YouTube video? Are we recording it first also?
It was recommended by Tracy.
Okay. So are we going to post two videos?
No, the Zoom video doesn't get posted. Peter's video gets posted.
Phil, Phil, you, you raise an excellent point. Uh, and in fact, uh, a few moments ago, when you guys cut to pause, uh, for, uh, the, the tape transfer, I actually emailed Tony Santarangelo as well as Tracy Brinkman. Uh, we have been struggling, uh, with the GCTV folks to determine continued viability for their operation, uh, given the new technologies that exist today. Uh, and your, your question is well founded. Uh, we are working with them to be able to actually broadcast from, uh, that location, uh, directly to GCTV so that it could be live, uh, on GCTV in addition to live on Zoom. Uh, so we're, the, the, the short answer is, we're trying to work through continued relevance for GCTV in terms of reporting and participating in, uh, in programming and providing to the public access to our meetings.
I'm just curious, like, though, if, if just the camera portions being, you know, put up, you're kind of missing a lot in terms of, I mean, I sincerely appreciate the ability of Jamie to screen share and so, you know, lots of different things. It's going to get missed a little bit. You know, you get a lesser.
Lesser experience, yeah.
Experience by the live version than the Zoom version.
There's no question about it, and that's the struggle that GCTV is going through for relevancy. Uh, they have actually, they've actually commissioned a consultant to try to determine, uh, and they did a series of interviews within the community, uh, relative to how they continue to be relevant, that they can be relevant, given what, what, uh, what is available to our community at this point, so.
Sorry, just throwing it out.
No, Phil, it's a, it's a great question, uh, and one that I, once again, I had with myself a couple minutes ago.
Appreciate it, thank you. Uh, we continue with the regular meeting. Um, we have entertained a motion to continue, uh, deliberation on the Hubbard Road LLC, uh, Hubbard, Hubbard Road, map seventy-nine, lot forty-eight, Zone I, two site plan approvals for construction of a CGS eight dash thirty G four housing project, including two buildings and parking area, subdivision systems, utilities, stormwater management areas.
Are we supposed to be hearing, um, another applicant or not?
Yeah, two, two.
That's right after this.
Okay, so we're going to, we're going to do a little deliberating on?
I'm just looking to continue this deliberation to, uh, our May eighteenth.
Motion to continue. Second?
Uh, we'll do a roll call, Bill Freeman?
Yes.
Uh, Phil Johnson?
Yes.
Sean Cosgrove?
Aye.
Kevin Clark?
Yes.
And I'll also vote yes. Um, yeah, so the next item on our agenda is Martha N. Pacillo, Wesley Anelton, and Nancy Jackson, four sixty-four, Tiana Marsh Road, map eighty-one, lot four, Zone R five, application for a seven lot subdivision. I believe, um, Jamie, do you want to speak to, give us the general synopsis of this?
Uh, I would invite either Mark Young from Waldo and Associates or Attorney BD to kick us off.
Thank you.
Yep.
Attorney BD.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I'm, I'm going to pass the, uh, pass the mic for the screen over to Mark Young to, to start the, uh, presentation on behalf of the applicant. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Uh, my name is Mark Young. I'm the administrator of Waldo Associates, uh, representing the Anelton family in this application. Um, property as a whole is thirteen point eight, thirteen point three acres. We are proposing to subdivide it into seven lots. Three of the lots out front is on Tana Marsh Road, and one of them will be occupied by the disney house. There will be, uh, four interior lots. Uh, and in accordance with, uh, section two seventy-two, uh, thirty-one eight of the subdivision regulations, we are requesting a pool of these interior lots. There is, uh, substantial area of buildable land, uh, to rear the rest of the portion of the property, where there is insufficient frontage, uh, to, um, uh, accommodate any more lots. Uh, we've laid the, uh, subdivision out with, uh, a right of, uh, two rights of way, uh, each of which will serve, uh, three lots, uh, in accordance with the regulations. Uh, each, each right of way will have sort of one front lot and two rear lots. By serving the frontage lots off of the, uh, right of way, it will reduce the number of curb cuts, uh, on the, uh, street running.
So, Mark, Mark, how many, how many curb cuts are you proposing?
There will be two new curb cuts. Um, there's an existing driveway, uh, certain existing house, uh, which we expect will remain. Uh, in fact, it has to remain because, uh, the regulations only allow three, three houses on a driveway, and so these driveways are backed down after this. Now, the, uh, the interior lots, uh, technically violate, uh, section two seventy-two, according to the subdivision regulations, which, uh, stipulates a maximum, um, width to length ratio of one to two point five of the lots. Uh, the intent being to discourage, uh, long narrow lots with the possibility of, uh, of an additional interior lot. In fact, there's a large proportion of wetlands on all four of these interior lots. The buildable portion of these lots, which is, that is the high ground, which counts for the minimum lot area, uh, does in fact perform with the one to two point five, uh, ratio. Um, so I, I think we are performing with the intent of the regulation, but, um, we are requesting that the, uh, the commission waive that requirement, uh, in light of the, uh, the wetlands present on the lots. Uh, we have conducted soil tests on all these lots. We conducted four deep test pits and two prep tests on each lot. Uh, these tests showed well-grained sandy soils, which will be, uh, suitable for underground septic system. We've run through some technical calculations, uh, which are shown on the note sheet, uh, as far as, uh, sizing for a typical four-bedroom house. And, uh, we've laid out, uh, possible system, subdivision, um, which will meet the regulations and, uh, our size, uh, according to the regulations. Uh, the, uh, Sonia, our, our representative Sonia has reviewed the plan, uh, in conjunction with our wetlands application, and, uh, uh, she has concluded that the lots are suitable for, uh, underground, uh, sewage disposal system. Uh, and the, as far as the wetlands, uh, we have submitted this to the wetlands agency, uh, for review, um, as required. Uh, the, uh, in the wetlands commission, uh, lost the property and, uh, considered it at, uh, at their meeting and have reported favorably on the subdivision. Most of the, uh, construction activity will be outside the hundred total review zone. Uh, we anticipate, uh, lot seven, perhaps lot six, may have some grading into the review zone. Uh, in any case, all of these lots are going to require engineered site plan. And, uh, before real life, uh, those site plans will be reviewed by the wetlands commission, uh, if there are, uh, regulated activities. Uh, so, um, now, uh, we've required an erosion and sedimentation control sheet with the application package. We've, we're specifying best management practices, uh, for, uh, erosion and sedimentation control. It's mostly straightforward. Uh, this is, all these lots, the slopes are fairly gentle. We don't expect, uh, it will be significant, uh, erosion problems. Uh, primarily, the primary, um, uh, uh, nutrient control procedure will be a silt test, uh, surrounding each lot, um, on, on three sides. Uh, and, and again, these are fairly gentle slopes. We don't, uh, anticipate any, any big problems. Um, now, uh, there are several, uh, substantial, historic stone walls, uh, on the property, uh, which are shown on the plan. Uh, most of the, most of them will, will, will not be disturbed by destruction. However, uh, lot seven, um, it, it, there really is a room for the house and septic up there from that stone wall, so we, we do expect to, uh, have to remove that stone wall, but we have specified a, uh, location for, uh, that it may be reconstructed on the downhill edge of the, uh, of the, of the lawn area. Um, additionally, the, uh, uh, the right of way that goes, uh, to certain, uh, lots, uh, two, six, and seven, that has to cut across the stone wall also. Uh, you know, a relatively narrow cut, uh, uh, we would suggest that that, that, that stone wall be reconstructed, uh, along the property line, something appropriate of that. Um, I think, uh, you know, overall, it, uh, straightforward, um, subdivision, nothing is really squeezed in. I think, uh, uh, soils are suitable. We don't expect any problems there. Uh, it's a, it's already fairly well-developed street, um, so we think these will, uh, this will provide a comfortable and attractive home sites and, uh, and be an asset in town. a comfortable and attractive home sites and be an asset in town. Of course, I'd be happy to ask my questions.
Great. There's two memos. There's one from Kevin Clark from.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Sure, go for it.
So, does the zoning code, if I hear this right, Mark, the zoning code said that these are not permitted?
It says the, the planning zoning commission has a discretion to allow lots of this shape.
Yeah, just to clarify, it's the subdivision code, which has some language that is meant to avoid kind of long skinny lots, but the waiver is being requested due to the essentially undevelopable portion of the back of the long skinny lot that consists of wetlands. So, once you, once you remove that from the equation, the lot is not so long and skinny, but rather square.
But it's not a, it's the part of it?
Yeah.
Well, the usable land, that is, the area which is usable to meet the minimum lot area doesn't bother. And I think it's a reasonable request to request a waiver of that.
But regulations don't currently contemplate usable land. They talk about the total area. Am I right about that or not? I mean, the, one of the amendment, one of the things we discussed in our workshop on the change in the zoning code was changing the definition of the lot to a usable land, which would, depending if that goes forward or not, might be something to think about.
Hey, Mark, the eastern boundary, the furthest eastern boundary of lots five, six, or four, five, six, and seven, how far are they from the eastern, from the eastern, are they?
Oh, well, the east river is over the, over the other side of Hubbard Road, our already.
Okay, okay.
It's actually this half and left.
Okay.
You know, and we're actually, this watershed actually drains to the west, and I believe eventually.
It drains to the?
No, I got your right. This wetland system drains to the north and eventually becomes Tanner Marsh Road and drains under Tanner Marsh Road to the bottom of the hill there and then east river.
Okay, okay.
Serious substantial water area. It's pretty much dotted on all sides by residential club dog. To the northwest is Franklin's Landing, to the west is Potter Hill Drive, and to the south is Roosevelt Four and Many.
Further than that, yeah, I think so.
Any, any plans for sidewalks? I'm just kidding, I couldn't resist.
Don't mention sidewalks.
Question about the stone wall, how many linear feet of stone wall you actually are moving?
Well, again, it depends how, you know, how that backyard gets laid out, but I would expect more than a hundred feet. It's certainly, you know, it's below, with less than a hundred feet of, 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 of the move.
Okay, and you're planning on building a hundred linear feet of, of, of the south?
That was the plan. I thought of a, an area maybe fifty feet downhill, which would be appropriate and would not be excessive amount of work. I'd like to see the stone wall being built on the property line, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would, might be a little unreasonable in terms of the amount of work.
I wasn't sure, maybe you were going to extend the, the leftmost wall on lot seven, you were going to finish that lot from south to north?
Continue it to the north.
Yeah.
That is a possibility. It'd be, you know, this term is a little touch of wetlands, but, you know, it's, again, that's, it's actually much better, I think, would be up to the.
Yeah, yeah.
There are a lot of possibilities.
But it sounds like it's a hundred-foot exchange, you know, from a hundred foot for a hundred foot, so that sounds good.
Yeah, yeah, that was the idea. I think, you know, and the way, where these lots have a gentle slope down to the west, a stone wall would be a perfect, sort of a boundary in the backyard. You know, it'd be as attractive, edge, edge end, you know, makes my landscaping, and, you know, it would, to say, protect the rest of the reviews on there.
Yeah. I think we talked about that on the wetlands block, about how that was, it's nice, not only a visual barrier, but a physical barrier, you know, in front of the wetland boundary, so.
Yeah, there's, there's more room to the east side of that, the stone wall, on the other lots, lots four, five, and six, so we've done, I'm sure that those houses could be going out, pulling up long.
And, Mark, not that it has anything to do with zoning code, but I'm just curious whether the structures on lots four, five, six, and seven would be visible from Tanner Marsh Road?
Probably in the winter, yes.
Yeah, it couldn't be visible fully.
Yes, in, in, in the summer, possibly, you know, a glimpse between the ways here and there. But they are downhill ways, so you'll only be seeing the, the, the roof in those parts. Lot four, you know, you're, you're looking across the, the existing yard from four oh four and three, or, you know, between those houses, you might see something down the back, because those are all open yards.
Yeah.
Probably see that house down the back there. But there's a remainder of a stone wall, it's passed along that property line, so, you know, that would be, we will come in here.
Thank you. So we have, do have a couple of highlights from, ones from the inland wetlands, the resolution that they had. Kevin, do you want to just speak briefly to the two stipulations that you posed?
The order. Okay, State of Booth Middleton, four sixty-four Tanner Marsh Road map eighty-one. Dear State of Booth Middleton, at its inland wetlands meeting on March ninth, twenty twenty-two, the Gilbert Inland Wetlands Commission took the following action. Resolve that the inland wetlands boundary shown on map titled subdivision plan, property of the State of Booth Middleton, Tanner Marsh Road, Gilbert, Connecticut, sheet one of three, dated February fourth, twenty twenty-two, prepared by Walden Associates LLC, is substantially correct. Quote of the Gilbert Inland Wetlands Commission refers favorably to the Planning and Zoning Commission, the subdivision shown on map titled subdivision plan, property of the State of Booth Middleton, Tanner Marsh Road, Gilbert, Connecticut, dated February fourth, twenty twenty-two, sheet one of three, subdivision plan, property of the State of Booth Middleton, Tanner Marsh Road, Gilbert, Connecticut, sheet two of three, dated February fourth, twenty twenty-two, and last revised March ninth, twenty twenty-two, and subdivision plan. Property of the State of Booth Middleton, Tanner Marsh Road, Gilbert, Connecticut, sheet three of three, dated February fourth, twenty twenty-two, and last revised March ninth, twenty twenty-two, prepared by Walden Associates with the following conditions. One, subdivision lots four, five, six, and seven need to come back to inland wetlands commission for a regulated activity permit. Two, prior to the issuance of a building permit, inland wetlands boundary shall be permanently delineated by setting a permanent four-by-four wooden or concrete post. The post shall be marked with signage indicating that our wetland boundary markers, posts are to be located along the wetland boundary as shown on the final plan at a maximum of fifty feet intervals and approved by the inland wetlands enforcement officer. Regular activities approved based upon the plan if there's no feasible or futile alternative in consideration of this project.
Thanks. I think, Jamie, just one quick point, just to settle up for me, based off of our talk on the previous application, but is there a reason why we need to bring these stipulations forward to our approval?
No, I actually don't think so. It was a question that Lisa and I had earlier today. I do think that there was a bit of a flurry of activity coming out of the inland wetlands and watercourses commission today in terms of their resolutions, and we were, we were perhaps shared these resolutions on the subdivision referral, you know, in that activity, but to my memory, I don't, I don't ever remember seeing these in the planning and zoning commission other than they just being documented in the environmental planner's memo. So I think I've answered your question and then some, but there are no stipulations that I think need, need further discussion from this commission.
Okay, we have one other memo from Kevin McGee, environmental planner. I guess I will read this one real quick. From Kevin McGee, environmental planner, to Gilbert Planning and Zoning Commission, RE Middleton subdivision, four sixty-four Tanner Marsh Road, Gilbert, Connecticut, oh six four three seven, essential map eighty-one lot four. Applicant is proposing to subdivide a thirteen point three acre parcel to seven building lots. The applicant has completed the check list to guide low-impact development based best management practices and is utilizing several of the recommended practices. The applicant show, plans show that they are maintaining native vegetation outside the immediate construction area, which provides for a vegetative buffer to the wetlands, utilizing shared driveways and are infiltrating roofwater into rain gardens. The applicant is proposing a fee in lieu of open space, which I am in favor of, since there is no dedicated open space adjacent to this property. Inland wetlands are located on the western portion of the property. At the inland wetlands meeting on March twenty-first, twenty twenty-two, the commission referred favorably to the planning and zoning commission, the subdivision shown on map, map titled subdivision plan dash property of the State of Booth Middleton, Tanner Marsh Road, Gilbert, Connecticut, three sheets, dated February fourth, twenty twenty-two, revised to March mag, twenty twenty-two, prepared by Walden Associates with the conditions, subdivision lots four, five, six, and seven need to come back to the inland wetlands commission for a regulated activity permit, and prior to the issuance of the building permit. The inland wetlands boundary shall be permanently delineated by setting a permit, four by four wooden compound or concrete post. See a copy of the referral letter for the full recommendation conditions. Recommendations for conditions of approval. One, the town Gilbert zoning enforcement officers should be notified to inspect the sedimentation erosion control measures prior to site work. Soil stockpile shall be contained by silt fencing and/or hay bales. Soil erosion and sedimentation control orders shall be retained until vegetation is established or suitable material is installed to the satisfaction of the zoning enforcement officer. Two, the recommendations from the inland wetlands commission be placed on the final subdivision plans. Three, that the applicant pays a fee in lieu of land in accordance with the, with Connecticut General Statute, section eight twenty-five. Payment for the fee in lieu shall, shall place in the town Gilbert land acquisition fund and according to provisions of Connecticut General Statute, section eight dash twenty-five Attorney BD, do you have any, or Mark, do you have any issues with his stipulations?
Okay, I think Attorney BD has commentary on.
Yeah, Attorney BD, do you want to discuss open space addition versus fee in lieu?
Yeah, we have no, I sent a letter to the commission at the beginning of last month outlining what we were offering in terms of the fee in lieu of open space, and we were offering to make a contribution to the land acquisition fund of five thousand dollars in part based upon the, what Mr. Young was saying earlier with regard to the topography of the inland wetlands already located on the site. There's a fair amount of lots four, five, six, and seven that are undevelopable because of the presence of wetlands. And addition, although, as Mr. McGee points out in his memo, that there's no dedicated open space adjacent to this site, the lots on Franklin's Landing, Potter Subdivision, and the Potter Subdivision primarily to the west of what we're proposing are similarly impacted by wetlands. So while there's no formal dedication of open space, those areas of both the neighboring parcels to the west and this piece are effectively undevelopable and create an open space area, although not accessible to the public, it does preserve the wetlands, the wildlife, and the vegetation. So our, our thought was that, given that the, there's an extensive portion of the proposed subdivision that's undevelopable, that we would make an offer of the five thousand dollars in lieu of dedicated open space, so that's the proposal.
Thanks, thanks, Mr. BD. I want to bring out to all the commissioners, I think, we started talking about this in that workshop that Phil Johnson alluded to from previous in the last month. I think as a result of, you know, our change order in town planner with Jamie Stein, she's really trying to make a point of us coming to a little bit more standard of a decision on how we handle fee in lieu of going forward, and that's something that I have been in favor of for some time as well, and it seems like from that discussion we had at the workshop, most of the other commissioners that were involved are also interested in kind of standardizing this thing. So while I will admit that in the past we've made different decisions with fee in lieu, I think part of this subdivision, we as a group, we need to kind of come to a decision of how we're going to handle these things going forward. I think the proposal from, from Jamie is that we simply just follow Connecticut General Statute eight dash twenty-five B, which is also what is being recommended by our town environmental planner as well. And basically, it's my understanding, Jamie, you can maybe jump in, basically that if we're accepting a fee in lieu of the, it's a ten percent of the, I always get it wrong.
Fair market value? Sure, sure, so the Connecticut General Statute, if you read it kind of verbatim, it speaks about the fair market value of the land prior to subdivision, and that that fair market value be arrived at sort of jointly by the applicant and the commission, and that that be a third-party appraisal, an appraiser. And the, the language reads that it would be, let me, let me just read it for you, because I want to get this exactly right. The fair market value of land transferred shall be equal to not more than ten percent of the fair market value of the land to be subdivided prior to the approval of the subdivision.
And Jamie, just to be clear, is it, is it the portion land or the whole land?
The whole land. I understand.
Prior to, prior to this approval of the subdivision.
So before it's divided up, you get an appraisal of what incurred value is.
The, the point is, it's ten percent of the whole land, not the portion that is being separated?
No.
It's, it's the thirteen point three acre entire property.
Correct.
Right.
And you're getting a mortgage for the whole piece of property that had a house on it, or you were going to get a mortgage to build a house, and it was a thirteen acre parcel, do you get an appraisal for the thirteen acres? That's essentially what they're doing.
Right, right, I think you're right, though, yeah.
So, Jeff?
I think that's, my own personal opinion is I think that's the way to go forward.
I, well, my personal, I think ten percent's pretty steep. But, I mean, as we have, I mean, put it this way, I don't think, if, if we're holding it at ten percent, thirteen point three acres value that, Jeff will probably agree, is not fifty thousand dollars.
Well, it's not five thousand, certainly, no.
Well, no, I mean, to get to the five thousand dollar number, you then have to say that the value of thirteen point three acres is fifty thousand.
As I pointed out, and I think very appropriately, thirteen point three acres on Tanner Marsh, thirteen point eight, thirteen point three acres in North Gilbert, and thirteen point three acres on St. James Head Road somewhere are completely different elements.
Right.
So that, that is why we have, as a commission, have to come up with something that the public will consider to be fair in terms of fee in lieu.
But isn't it all commensurate with the location and what the value of the lots will eventually be?
I don't think it's what the value of the lots will eventually be.
I'm just saying, that he's saying that you have to look at it differently depending on where.
No, I was not, I was not saying look at it differently, hey, we have to come up with a formula. No, I was not saying look at it differently. Hey, we have to come up with a formula, the public will consider fair, if someone is owning North Guilford and sees someone that gets a fee in lieu of that is crazy low compared to a fair paying North Guilford, we have to come up with something that's considered fair by the entire town. That's what I'm saying.
I don't think there's any question that you want to come up with a system that's fair. But I would also point out that it says up to 10%. It doesn't have to be 10%.
But I think that's the problem we've run into in the past, is become sort of, you know, depending on who, whoever it is and who we're talking to, we make our decision differently. I think my opinion is, is that we should make it one thing and stick to it for every location.
Bill, I totally agree. I think they have to make it so it's, I mean, anyone who's developing land, or even a landowner who wants to, you know, subdivide from one to two lots.
Or one.
They should have some certainty about what their costs are in that development.
So for example, town, help me out here, Jamie, town in Branford, I believe, charges $3,000 a lot.
Yep, flat. That's a flat, flat fee.
Is that correct?
I don't know if it's Branford, but there is a town that does that. There are also towns that use the assessed value of the parcel. There's many different ways to do it. I think our subdivision regulations specifically point to the Connecticut general statutes and how it is laid out. So.
I do think that we, like other shoreline towns, have a little bit of a different situation. We've got very, very valuable land, we've used that 10% equation on the shoreline, and we have, you know, not so valuable land in North Guilford. And it's just, it's something we have to consider. And if the state statute gives us latitude, we consider as a commission to be fair. That's all I'm saying.
Well, I don't know if it gives, I think the only latitude that the statute gives you is determining what the amount is. And if you don't set, in my opinion, if you come up with a number that is what that percentage is going to be, whether your land is at Saint James Head or is next to the Durham Town Line, but that's the number, and you apply it across the entire town, to me, that seems fair, because the property values in closer to the water are more substantial than they are in North Guilford, generally speaking. If you, I think if you get to a situation where you're looking at the site and saying, well, we're going to apply a different standard in North Guilford than we are at the water, then you're kind of back in the situation where you are now, where you're kind of going in fits and starts.
No, we can't, we can't do that.
But I'm not suggesting that's what you're saying. I just think coming up with a fair system is for an athlete to know, all right, this is the way, for example, Mr. Johnson just pointed out, Branford does it $3,000 a lot. You know, going in, that's what you're going to pay. If you know what the percentage is in Guilford, when you come in for an application and it's going to be two and a half, or eight and a half, or whatever number the commission thinks is a reasonable number, then you know what that's going to be going in. I think it's.
Well, I think, you know, we've got very tense discussions with a variety of approaches of this, you know, something gradually up to a maximum, and we're sort of.
No, I get that. Unfortunately, we said in our application where.
I know.
So what do we do for right now? So the appraised value of the town's E property card for just the land is 293,430. And that's up for 13 plus acres. I mean, I coughed that up tomorrow, but that's, you respect it. So it's, you know, if we take, if we just take the town's appraised value of the land and apply a factor, that takes the, what's it really worth, out of our hands and puts it on, how is everyone being, you know, called taxed? You know, I think we would all agree it's probably undervalued at that, but that's the current value according to the town.
Well, not to interrupt Mr. Johnson, but the only thing I would point out when we're at that number is that that's the value that the town put on it in 2019.
So it's probably more.
It could be, I don't know.
It's, I think Phil, that's also.
You raise.
You might want to retract that one.
You shouldn't be raising that question. This is not your client's.
No, I'm just trying to be, I'm just, I don't mind anybody operating under the wrong assumption of what the value is.
No, but Phil's raising a good point.
I agree.
If we use the baseline equation of what we, you know, could use, you're talking about six times, you know, six times what you proposed.
I think one thing for Phil's comments is that's partially why the statute is calling up for a third party appraisal as well, so that the town and the applicant can come to an agreement on what the worth of the land is, which I think is a valuable thing that we should move towards as well as leaning on that a little bit more often with such things. Because we're not qualified to say how much a piece of land is on sale. So how to move forward with this is the question? Yeah, I'm not sure.
If I could just add, Mr. Attorney.
Yeah, any suggestions?
Yeah. I will just sort of echo what Attorney Beatty is saying in terms of, I have chatted with a few, you know, developers that we often see in Town Hall South, and the assurity as they move forward, they know what to bank on, is really what's important. The idea that they know what to expect going into a development is critical. And I think, you know, we also, you know, have a little bit of a back and forth about whether it's a fee or it's a dedication of land. And so it is tricky, but I think just some assurance that if a fee is proposed, that the developer is aware, or the applicant is aware of what that fee could be at the outset of their application.
And honestly, my initial reaction is to just start it at the suggest, what the statute suggests at 10% and see what happens, basically. If somebody wants to come to us with asking for an exception based off of something, I don't know, that gives us a reason that.
Yeah, I think it should start out where usually applicant knows that he's got to go get an appraisal, and it's going to be 10%. And if he wants to make a case that there are other extenuating circumstances, such as unusable land or something, then that's fine. But I think you need to have a baseline that they know going in that they need to get an appraisal.
Right.
Or utilize the town's.
Yeah.
Is what the town says is worth.
But that's not what the statute says. And that's what we have in our regular.
So the statute says we have to get an appraisal. We can't use the town's appraised value?
It doesn't.
Dash says a third party appraisal.
Well, I mean, isn't the town's assessment a third party appraisal? It's not an appraisal from the applicant, and it's not us determining the value. It's a third party independent valuation firm that comes up with that number?
That's an interesting perspective.
Yeah, let's work on this.
I mean, the town doesn't do it. The town hires an appraiser company to develop these numbers.
And that fee that the town pays for the greenhouse is substantial, too.
I don't think there's anything in the statute that would say otherwise. I mean, I can ask Chuck, I can ask Attorney Andrus about this. You know, I think it's just that it is agreed upon by the applicant and the commission. So the way that that might move forward is at a later date, when, you know, the applicant may put forth who that appraiser would be. It would come before the commission for a vote, and we would vote yea or nay, and then it would proceed.
So I think, Scott, how do we move forward on this tonight? Can we get some input from, you know, Chuck, or just, I don't know, we're always sort of at this position with the fee in lieu of, where we have to make a decision sort of on the fly?
Correct.
I feel uncomfortable with that.
Agreed. Part of this is, part of going the direction that Jamie's been suggesting is that we put in one of our conditions of approval, basically that, here, I'll just, Jamie, should I just read what language you were proposing of putting in the proposal?
Mr. Sharon, I would suggest that perhaps you, I don't know if this is considered deliberations at this point, but just, you know, invite the public if they have anything to say. I'm not sure if you.
So.
We can stop public here.
Okay, sorry.
So.
Sure. You're welcome to read that, read that suggestion.
So the suggestion was that for Guilford subdivision code, section 272 dash 41, the fee in lieu of land allocation, a fee in lieu of land shall be paid through the acquisition fund of the town in accordance with the section eight dash 25 of Connecticut general statutes as amended, the fair market value of the land to be subdivided shall be determined by an appraiser jointly selected by the commission and the applicant. Maybe it shall be made at the time of sale of each approved parcel of land within the subdivision. So the point being that this, the exact number isn't exactly determined by us at this time. It's determined by the, based off the appraisal and based off the general statutes, and then is paid at the time of sale, approved parcel of land. Again, so to answer your question, Bill, that's kind of the direction that we're trying to standardize this to, so that we can just have this general wording that we use in handling these sort of situations.
And is that going to set the threshold at 10% and keep it there? Or, because I always get it in the.
As per stated, yes.
Okay.
So was there anything preventing us tonight from just saying, why don't we just do 10% of the 2019 value?
No. I mean, again, this is us. We can deliberate however we want to. So technically, as long as it's up to 10% of the appraisal value, then we are within our purview.
So what you're saying is basically we're just saying the threshold is 10, and then we'll discuss.
Correct. If that's the way we have to get through this mess in order to have a decision, yes.
So that would put then the fee in lieu of around $29,000 in change?
Correct.
Right.
If we're going with the appraisal this time. Does anybody want to deliberate a different number?
I mean, I guess you could argue that the undevelopable portion of the land we might discount at 10. I mean, I think we should start at that 10 number, but if there are circumstances that might warrant a reduction in that, I think we can just consider it.
I agree with Phil. I agree with Phil.
I mean, if, you know, half of the interior lots are basically undevelopable, I mean, I think if you discount it to seven and a half percent, just based, I mean, again, this is where we get a discretionary item versus, you know.
And this is where we get something that could be monopolized in a future version of zoning code, where developers have, you know, a real roadmap to determine what their costs are as far as a potential fee in lieu.
Agreed. And I think, Sean, everyone agrees that we need to come to a point where we have that. And I think what we're trying to decide now is, is what's the number going to be for this application?
So here's a question. Does the, does the current assessment take account the existence of the wetlands in?
That's going to be my question, yeah. I think they do.
Yeah, no.
I don't think they allocate it out, because you can have a house with marshland down the water. I don't think they say, oh, marshland's worth X, and high ground is worth Y. I think they just say, here's the value of the land. It's supposed to be on the fair market value of the land. And presumably, that factors in location, proximity to the water, you know, if it's entirely on ledge and difficult to build upon, impacted by wetlands, all that's supposed to be factored into the value of the property. So.
Good.
When they do give assessments, if those things are actually, I know of your proximity to the shore is always kind of guiding them, but I don't know if they actually, maybe Matt knows whether they, you know, differentiate between a wetland and a ledge and a rock and this.
And that's a good point, too. Because a lot of times, if you've got an undeveloped piece of land and there's been no boundary, wetland boundary, you have no idea how much acreage is even there for wetlands. So.
Bill, to answer your question, I don't know definitively, but my suspicion is, I would find it hard to believe that you assess a piece of property without accommodating the fact that you can't develop a piece of it. If you have a piece of property that's on the mountain, but you can't develop it, is that worth the same, would that be appraised at the same amount, assessed the same amount as a piece that you could, same acreage?
I don't know how they do it.
Yeah, I would find it hard to believe. But again, it's speculation at this point. We'd be happy to have a conversation with the assessor if you guys want to have that conversation to try to iron that out. But.
Yeah, I'm going to need you in the future here.
I think just for our clarity in going forward, I think we really should probably stick to either the appraised value on the town's tax records, or an appraised value provided by a third party.
Which is based on the statute, correct.
I mean, I think if we do anything other than that, we're kind of going down a pretty slow, pretty slow.
So Attorney Beatty, would the, would your client want to hire a third party appraiser?
Well, that brings up a point that I was going to bring up, I think Mr. Freeman mentioned earlier about the applicant coming in with an appraisal already prepared in connection with the subdivision application for these purposes. I think the statute contemplates, though, that, that's why it says an appraisal to be agreed upon by, between the town and the applicant, because you could imagine that there may be town-friendly appraisers and applicant-friendly appraisers that would be submitting.
Is the operative phrase here agreed upon?
I think so.
Are they agreeing upon the appraisal amount, or are they agreeing on who they're picking for the appraiser? That's the part I think.
The language, if I could interject, just read the statute here. The fair market. Thank you, Sean. The fair market value shall be determined by an appraiser jointly selected by the commission and the applicant.
Okay, so that's one is a third party.
You're correct.
Right. Can we agree, though, that the third party was done, work was done in 2019?
Yes.
I don't think, I don't think they would have a problem with that at this point.
That's pretty even-handed across all properties, at least.
Right.
And based on what we've been discussing about how they're doing, the assessors doing it, is it already would have taken into account the weapons? Is that correct in the current rule?
Yes.
I can confirm that.
No, I know. I mean, we're kind of making assumptions, too. And that was one of them. So then the actual appraisal that's there would reflect that.
Yeah, but that's, so I, whatever, you know, not opposed to Attorney Beatty, but just maybe, you know, thinking out loud, saying, if there's an appraisal that was done in 2019, would they want to have another third party do one in the middle of 2022?
Hit your head.
So. Again.
Right, that, I asked a hypothetical.
But it's a double-edged sword, though, because if you use that number, because I think unfortunately, all of us are at an age where we remember when property values were going the opposite. were going the opposite direction, you could, you could have a value that was done on, that's a, that the town has that's substantially higher than what it is at the time you make the application.
I, it's, it's always an arbitrary number. Look at values in two thousand, except for two thousand eight, nine. I mean, obviously.
Yes, Matt.
Mr. Chairman, Jeff, Attorney B, excuse me, it's Robert Terrell. I, because I do these things, I get bored occasionally, and I have nothing to do between midnight and six in the morning, I have a spreadsheet that tracks properties that have been sold over the last fourteen months, thirteen, fourteen months. The sample size is about four hundred and sixty, four hundred and seventy properties that have turned over. And my spreadsheet details the sales price versus the current assessed price, or the appraised price, not assessed price. And you should know that the average difference between the sales price and the full market appraisal price by our assessor is a margin of thirty-five percent.
I was going to say thirty-eight, but I do have a current.
Okay, so, that, that, that bodes well for dropping the mill rate next year, so we fall underneath the thirty-two point four-six property, the car tax situation, which generally helps.
Yeah, please, please do that.
But nonetheless, and again, whether that holds true, you know, that's a, your sales price is only one of the variables they use in the, the assessors, in the assessment process, but clearly, I think we're going to see a significant growth in our grant this, and whether that is on certain properties or across the board is open to speculation.
So, again, to bring us to that, this is kind of why from the beginning I asserted that it's, of my opinion, that we should probably lean on the Connecticut general statutes, because again, it's, it's asking for a appraisal that's agreed to by the two parties, it's in the moment, it's not from two years ago, it's not from the future, it's from in the moment. And it's, it's my feeling personally that we just start with a ten percent and.
So, just, just some quick math, if we just went with the appraised value at the two ninety-three, that would add four thousand dollars per lot. On what are probably, and again, I'm throwing it out, at a very minimal two hundred and fifty thousand dollar lots, I mean, I'm just.
Yeah.
Two to two fifty. I think, I think it's, it's, we made it clear that we're all concerned about, you know, maintaining the availability of Billford and making sure that these projects can continue, but I think you're making an excellent point that, you know, ten percent might not, it's not, might not be as crazy as what it sounds. And it's, 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 it's something that we can fall back on in confidence right now and in tonight's decision, and then moving forward, it's a good baseline for us to start going forward.
I agree. I mean, I, I think a twenty-nine thousand dollar fee on seven lots at four thousand dollars a lot on a, but I think it's a fairly advantageous appraised value is, is still a pretty good deal, especially if we're going to stick to that as our mechanism.
I would expect that we at least start with that in our mechanism.
But in the going forward, we're going to require that in and outside the appraisers agreed on, appraisers gone, all right? I don't think we should hold up the Attorney B and his client at this point, just because I think that's fair, what, what you've come up with and what Phil's alluded to with the value per lot.
One thing I would suggest, not, I'm not trying to tell you folks how to draft the regulations, but to come up with a mechanism for how to, how to, how to reach that third party appraiser, I think will be something that you will spend some time thinking about as well. Just because I, I can see that depending on the size of the project, that, that could have a great impact in, for both, for both sides.
Absolutely, that's an excellent point, for sure. Kevin or Sean, did you have any opinion on this?
One, one thing I was just thinking of at the bill's point, I don't want to belabor this too much, should it be, should this fee in lieu be based on six lots, not seven, because one of them is already an existing lot? So, should, should it be penalized for existing lots?
It's, it's based on the total amount of land.
Absolutely.
So, Phil's math might be off, it's not thirty-eight divided by, it's, it's five thousand instead of four thousand.
You're dividing four thousand, I think, among six more lots, it's not a margin, a big margin error there.
Right. Yeah, his math.
I, I still say the application is seven lots, but whatever.
Right. Sean, how do you feel about going with ten percent on this, this one tonight?
Yeah, I mean, I think at this point, you know, I, I don't think we have much room until we really reconsider this, if, if we do reconsider, so I'm comfortable, you know, based on this situation, going that way.
Okay. Attorney B, I'm sorry that this had to happen on your application, was, it's been a long time coming, so I appreciate your patience on this one.
I'm happy to participate, and I don't envy you your task, so.
Well, we, we appreciate your input, too, quickly.
Yeah.
Commissioners, do we have any other questions to ask if Attorney B and Florrie have a motion? Or anything finally you want to tell you about your application, Attorney B?
No, I just think, I think that it meets the criteria, you know, you understand the thought process that went into our, our proposal, we understand the commission's position and that you're trying to move to a, a spot, and, you know, we're, it's, our timing was a, was what, was what it was, so we'd ask that you approve the application moving forward.
Jamie, Adam Silverman has had his hand up for a while, I'm not sure.
I'm Linda Gilbert, I'm his wife.
Hi.
I'm Silverman, I'm Lindsay Gilbert, I'm his wife, I live at one twenty-one Silverstone Drive, which is off the street from this proposed subdivision.
Okay.
I have a question about, well, I have several concerns about it, one being the wetlands in those areas, although you, you sorted that out. I don't quite understand how you're accounting for the runoff. I heard rain garden, which was kind of, you know, mentioned in there in the hay bales. You know, I don't really understand how that protects wetlands that much from seven new subdivisions. However, my concern, my biggest concern right now is water. We all have very deep wells on Mill Rogers Drive, they're roughly four hundred feet. My, mine is three eighty, and everybody who ever went and purchased the lot back in two thousand sixteen, that they measured the, I was concerned about the water situation because we had also put an offer on a lot that was trying to be subdivided up on, off of Little Meadow Road in Sunny Snout Ridge, I don't know if you guys remember that, but there were, you know, it was a newer, adopted subdivision that when it got put in, all of the neighboring subdivisions lost water slowly, and they were all fracking their wells, and they were all, you know, in a situation where they're basically left to the worst use of property because they couldn't get well from the ground anymore. So, that is still fresh in my mind from way back when, and I'm curious what process you guys go through when you're sub, when you're approving these subdivisions to ensure that we still have water. There's been a lot of development in that area in the last twenty years, Mill Rogers Drive is a whole new development, High Road is a whole new development, all the way down from there on Tanner Marsh, all these new houses have gone in. What do you do, what is, what is the decision-making process in ensuring that, you know, our resources are protected? What happened?
To us.
Or are you just going to put in seven new subdivisions and drill seven new wells and hope we all, you know, still have water tomorrow?
Well, so it certainly goes through all of our town, town staff, and Jamie, you can perhaps speak to that process?
Yes, I can, yeah, thank you for the question, Ms. Silverman. That would be under the purview of the Health Department, and I did raise this because I knew it was potentially a public concern with the Director of Public Health, and she spoke of the ability to, you know, have the soils on hand and the ability to create the wells and get reserved water. I, I can't really speak to it, I know that she knows quite a bit about it, and if you have a concern, I would reach out to her. Perhaps the engineering team might also come in.
I would ask you before you're going to throw this seven lot subdivision in an area that has just grown in the last twenty years, I mean, the population has grown quite, but even in the four houses behind me, three, four, three, five, four oh four and four oh five, those are the four kind of houses, you know, that are pretty much on Tanner Marsh but bordering this property. When I moved in five years ago, there were four people between those four houses, four or five people between those four houses, there was like single people and the elder two. Now there's upwards of twenty in that small area, so they're using a lot more water. So, is anyone measuring this or keeping track of the well yields or?
So, when we get it, Scott Gilbert, you jump in, so we're given a certain set of parameters, you know, here's the size of the property, here are the zoning requirements, here are the wetlands, you know, we'll get information from the Health Department primarily relating to septic and sanitation, but we don't get like well core samples or water flow sample, that's just, that, that's not within our purview as the land use commission. I mean, we just don't get that.
The land, you need water, so.
I mean, the, the other argument would be, I'm here and I don't want anyone else building because they might take, you know.
That's the situation at all. I just want to be someone looking out for it. I want to make, I don't want to end up like the people in Tuttles Point, and I don't want to end up like the people up on Talkeet that just woke up one day and the property was worthless because they had no water. So, as the zoning commission that is, as I understand that meant to protect our resources like wetlands and other things, or, I don't think it's my question.
We can check in with, as Jamie mentioned, it's, that's in the purview of the Health Director, we can check in with the Health Director and see if they can, you know, speak to that issue on subdivisions going forward, for sure. I don't know if anybody have any, Mark, do you have anything to, to add about your?
I would like to make one point, comparison with our, our town is entirely inappropriate, particularly on Calno Ridge or the, one of, of, let alone their completely different geology, the comparison is totally inappropriate.
Again, I don't know anything about that, my mom's not on the zoning commission.
I know a little, neither.
About wells, I just know that I want to wake up tomorrow and know that my well is functioning.
Sure, understood.
And know that the town is looking out for that, because I don't want to end up like the people in Tuttles Point, Talkeet, wherever, that just lost water because of overdevelopment and frankly, like that.
I, I think that's also part of why we require certain amounts of land, certain area, we don't, you know, we're not going to let this parcel become forty houses, you know, it's got certain requirements for lot size.
So, you're open to those requirements, you know, okay. So, I suggest that I go for, protect my water.
But if you're trying to imagine that, that we can see down into the earth and we can't in order to anyone.
Well, you're not, I don't know how wells work, I wish I did.
So, you could drill a well on one lot and it would get a hundred gallons a minute, and you could go fifty feet away and drill five hundred feet and get two gallons, so it seems not, there's no definitive way to determine that, so what the regulations say is you need to be X amount of feet away from the septic system, you need to be X amount of feet away from this, and, you know, and you can only be on the, you know, the lot size of that zone that you are in, so that's only, those are the only parameters we can control. The part that's under the ground, we, we can't, and I know that people do drill deep wells, and that's unfortunate, but that is sort of the luck of the draw when you're drilling a well.
I think we hear, we certainly hear your concern, and I think, as Jamie mentioned, that the Health Director is probably the place to start if you're willing to continue that discussion.
I'll add one thing, I think the only, the only time the drinking water part really comes into play, like visible play, is when the owner needs, or the developer needs to see about, he has to do a water test, so he has, he has to prove to the town that he is providing potable drinking water to the potential buyer. Once that happens, now, now, if, if he needs to drill a deeper well to get that, then that's probably what he needs to do, right? But other than that, there really is no, as far as I know, and I kind of, I do water testing for, for a living, that's the only time really the town comes into play as far as, or we're drinking water out of a lot, right? At that point. The house is already built, I don't think there's any metrics used by anybody prior to a house being built at this point, as far as I know.
Once you drill a well, you have to get certain amount of yield for the well, and if you don't get enough yield, you have to drill deeper till you have enough storage in the well, it's all prescribed.
You need two gallons per minute and it has to be drinkable. If they have to treat it to get it drinkable, then they treat it, but as long as they're providing potable water to the potential buyer, they're done.
I think that the underground aquifers, are, are you, are you suggesting that it doesn't affect other properties around it?
No, it's just that we don't have, it's not part of our purview, it's not.
I, I think if, you were so inclined to stop the subdivision, my guess is you'd have to engage an attorney and then thereby prove that the development of this lot would significantly negatively impact the property. I mean, I'm not an attorney, just not going to comment on it, so it's not, you know, a perfect route, but, I mean, maybe that's the.
I mean, we're, you know, we're a volunteer public commission, and we just have to, you know, follow the regulations, and the regulations, as Kevin's, you know, described and Phil's described.
So, does that seem like a problem to any of you, that, that there's, that you could just kind of drill wells all over the place and hope for the best, and, and no matter how you move into an area, you're just going to, you know, let it happen and see what happens down the street?
No. Or, again, we're following the town's regulations, so, you know, again, we, it could be taken up with other part, you know, but you're basically taking issue with the town regulations, effectively, which is fine, but this might not be the.
Would the prosecutor like to say something?
Yes, you guys are venturing into an area, and Jeff, you know this better than I, it's a property rights dispute, and there are, you are entitled to, to, to drill a well on your property regardless of the impact of anybody else around you. Those are basic property rights that are imbued in the Constitution. If, if, again, I didn't get your first name, but if you'd like to call my office, we'd be happy to have a conversation with you and our town attorney relative to, to those things. And in terms of the town, I, again, I don't want to get way over my speed, but the town does not have a role in ensuring that you have potable water on your property. That is not, that is not a, the burden that is placed on a municipality, that is a property rights issue. So, again, Jeff, Jeff, Jeff will tell you, I play an attorney on TV once in a while, and I'm probably way over my speeds, but I'd be happy to entertain a conversation with you and, and our, and our town attorney around some of those issues, if, if you want to call the office.
So, when the town, you know, chooses to run public water somewhere, why do they do that?
We, the most recent example is up on Tuttles Point and Mulberry Point, that is being paid for, the town, that is not a town project, that is being paid, that is being paid for by the residents in that area. The town has agreed to, to assume the responsibility for the law to do that, which the residents are, have all been, all of their properties have been taxed for a portion of those costs, that is not a town project, we just, we just agreed to underwrite it, they all agreed as property owners that they wanted to do that.
My other concern is the actual state of Tanner Marsh Road, as it is this right now, it's pretty rough, it's, you know, when you have, when two cars are coming and you're driven down.
Yeah, again, that's not, it's not.
I know, but.
Call, call, call my office, this is my brother.
Oh, you're talking at once, you're talking at once.
So, yes, again, this is not purview of this project, so you can definitely check in with the town on the statement.
Call my office, please, call my office.
It will affect the state of the road having that type of project?
Certainly.
Project? So, you're saying. So you're saying bring that up with...
You can call my office, you can call my office and I'll facilitate the appropriate discussions.
As far as the, the way that this, this subdivision relates to the town roads, this has been reviewed by the town engineer, and so that's within her purview, Jeff.
Town engineer for the roads and...
Health department.
Or you can just call the First Lieutenant's office.
Yeah, I'm gonna call Matt.
I mean, I'll give you his cell number.
Call Matt, I'll, I'll, I'll give you his number.
All right. Thanks for talking, Jeff.
Thank you, thank you.
Would anyone like to propose a motion on this subdivision?
Yes. There is one, do you want to read it?
Yes, please, please do, Mr. Murphy.
Loaded at the Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission approved a subdivision application for Martha and Pacilio Wesley A. Nettleton and Nancy Jackson, four-six-four Tanner Marsh Road, map A, one lot four, zone R five, to create a seven, to create seven lots as shown on Nettleton Tanner Marsh Road subdivision plans, seven sheets, prepared by Waldo and Associates dated March twenty-four, twenty-twenty-two, revised April fourteenth, twenty-twenty-two. This application is approved on the following conditions, that digital, that a digital copy of the final subdivision plan, including inland wetlands and water course commission recommendations, be submitted to the planning and zoning department. Prior to any site work or building permits, inland wetlands and water course commission permits are required for lots four, five, six, and seven. Prior to site work, the zoning enforcement officer shall be notified to inspect sedimentation and erosion control measures, soil stockpiles shall be contained by self-venting and/or hay bales, soil erosion and sedimentation controls measures shall be maintained until vegetation is established or suitable material is installed for this satisfaction of the zoning enforcement officer. Or, all building permits issued for subsequent subdivision lots shall incorporate all stormwater management features as approved in the subdivision plan. Per Guilford subdivision code section two-seven-two dash forty-one D, fee in lieu of land dedication, a fee in lieu of land shall be paid to the land acquisition fund of the town of, of the town. In accordance with section eight dash twenty-five of the Connecticut general statute, as amended, the fair market value of the land shall be subdivided by, shall be subdivided, should be subdiv, I'm sorry, should be subdivided, shall be determined by an appraiser directly selected by the commission and the applicant, payment shall be made at the time of the sale of the parcel. I believe we've decided that we will use the town's current assessed value and ten percent of that, is that correct?
Right, that would be twenty-nine thousand three forty-three.
Okay, and so as mentioned by Phil, it will be twenty-nine thousand four twenty-three.
Three, three four three.
Oh, sorry, twenty-nine thousand three four three. This application is approved based on finding the conformity of the zoning and subdivision code of the town.
Would you second?
Second.
Any discussion?
One thing I would say, and another discussion, I'm, I'm, I'm going to abstain, I just wanted to explain that I know that not to make a big deal out of this, and I, I'm not a big deal, I know, I think Bill Freeman said earlier, it's pretty much a straightforward subdivision. I'd just like to say that I haven't read the subdivision regulations yet, so I'd like to at least read them once through before I vote on about these things, so I have a better understanding what's going on, so for that reason, I'm staying. That's all I wanted to say.
Okay, appreciate that, Tim. Anyone else, discussion? All right, I'll call, Bill Freeman?
Yes.
Bill Johnson?
Yes.
Sean Cosgrove?
Aye.
Kevin Clark?
Staying.
And I will vote yes. Would anyone want to propose a motion for Town of Guilford fifty driveway, who, Bill proposed?
Oh, wait, I have one, I do have one question, did we have to read in Sonia Marinos, or did we, I missed it, about seven-mon subdivision?
He did not read it.
I suppose we did not.
I don't think anyone made a motion to close anyways, man.
Do you want me to read it?
I'll have you read it for the record, even though we've already voted. So it doesn't violate the circumstances entirely.
I just meant to mention it before I forgot.
I'm seeing my package, so that's why I missed it.
It has been shared with the applicants, it was posted on the website, it is publicly available and archived.
Do we need to read it in, or are we just gonna assume that it's in the record?
Have you received the memo, and are you comfortable with it?
I think my, the engineers have received it, I think they're comfortable with it, so...
To answer your question, technically, we do not have to read it, so do it as opposed to our, to the resident's name of listening.
Okay.
Okay, should we have a motion for fifty driveway, Town of Guilford?
Thank you, thank you very much, gentlemen. Good luck with the amendments to the regulations.
Thanks.
We'll invite you to help.
We're asking for public...
I'm happy to help out if you think it would be helpful, so...
Who can write a log written for that?
Thanks.
So is there a motion for fifty driveway?
Yes, it's in the motion package.
I have that as well, would you like to read it?
Sure, go for it, Bill.
Town of Guilford fifty driveway, who, Bill proposed motion, loaded the Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission approved coastal site plan application for the Town of Guilford fifty driveway assessor map thirty-four lot seventeen dash one for installation of thirty-four by seventeen by sixty hoop storied building. This application is approved on the following condition, conditions, the zoning enforcement officer shall be notified to inspect sedimentation erosion control measures, soil stockpiles shall be contained by self-venting or hay bales, soil erosion and sedimentation control measures shall be maintained until vegetation is established or suitable material is installed and satisfaction of the zoning enforcement officer. This application is approved based on the finding of the conformity of the zoning code of the town, the town and Connecticut Coastal Management Act.
Second?
Thank you, discussion? All right, I'll do a round of vote, Cheryl Johnson?
Yes, please, yes.
Sean Cosgrove?
Yes, please.
Bill Freeman?
Absolutely.
Kevin Clark?
Yes.
And I will also vote yes. New applications, Anthony and Danielle Papacota, one sixty Wilbers Lane, at one, one oh eight lot five, zone R eight, Special Department for Assessor Department, received and set public hearing for June first, twenty-twenty-one. Do I hear a motion?
I'm voting second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Other community, is, do we have any correspondence, Jamie, to this request?
No, we don't.
So then we move to approval of the minutes, entertain a motion for approval of the minutes.
I...
I abstained, I abstained, I was not for them.
Okay.
I reviewed the minutes and they appear to be substantially correct.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy.
Where's Frank?
Would you second?
Second, thank you.
All right, all in favor? And abstaining, all opposed, and all staying, Sean Cosgrove. All right, I, is, does anyone have anything else to discuss?
Any, any CEO activity, and then we can go, say bye-bye?
Yes, in fact, we did conduct a sweep of Boston Post Road for non-permitted, non-conforming temporary signage. Steve did that for us on Tuesday of this week, and to moderate success, it was sort of a courtesy, going in person, speaking with the businesses, explaining the sign ordinance and what is allowed as temporary signage and what is not. We're gonna give it a week, and if some of that signage persists, we'll proceed with notices of violation.
Jamie, Jamie, are you gonna be locking the doors when you leave the community?
I think, I think Peter and I are the last souls in the building. Maybe Brian, the very helpful young gentleman that got us all set up. But it's very nice, come visit next meeting.
If this is any example of my future as chairman, then we're referred to the others, someone, I'm here.
I did it, I did it in your first job.
You lost, you lost control, Scott, it was total...
No, I think I did that.
I saw your finger heading for the eject button.
Only four more years, Scott.
Scott's a maiden voyage, it'll, it's always the top.
It's mostly just everything you can imagine popped up, maybe from my chair, is that okay?
Well, we, we all, we all met beforehand, but we were...
I like it, it's a new tradition.
We had some curve notes, Sean was gonna say...
I think they, I think they call it hazing.
Yes, that's right, that's right.
Somebody told me one, it's like herding cats.
Yeah.
That was a really good analogy.
Well, thanks for sticking with me, everybody, I had a genuine motion to...